Good afternoon. We call the City Council Workshop for Thursday, January 1st to 11:00. And with that, we'll begin with our overall call.
Mayor Blackwell. Deputy Mayor Trace. Councilmember Matheny. Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Askew.
Before I begin, I just wanted to express a personal word of thanks, as well as from Mr. Phil Denhagie to the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as all the volunteers. I'm sure under the inspirational leadership of our city manager who showed up for the food distribution here at the city center. You guys did an amazing job, and he was incredibly grateful to all the city volunteers who go over to Sweden. And kind of day on, day off. And we'll have to thank you guys. You're awesome. Thank you so much. With that, we begin with the review of our strategic plan and accomplishments.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to have Chief Miller and Public Works Director Naseem Gandor to show you guys a briefing on the fire that occurred at the transfer station over the weekend.
Yes, that would be good.
Mayor?
Yes?
Could you say it all? On all fires?
Oh, we have one on Delores.
You have three anymore? Is it busy?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Jason Miller, Fire Chief, City St. Cloud. As you know, we've had an extremely busy last week with fires. We'll start with the first one, which was here in our city transfer station. Call was reported around 2:15 in the afternoon. It was actually found by a police officer who was investigating some other kids in the area. The kids we later found were not involved in any way. In total, we had approximately 50 firefighters on the location, including seven engines, one tower truck from Osceola County, and five rescues at one point, numerous chief officers and logistical support. In total, as far as gallons of water flowed, we're estimating anywhere from 2 to 250,000 gallons of water. Foam product, firefighter foam product used, around 300 gallons. Some of the consumables that were lost in that, a couple of small hand tools that received some damage from the fire department's side, and also some hose. Onto fire number two was the, I'm not sure if it was the residence or rental residence of one of our city employees that had occurred. Started off as a kitchen fire, progressed a little bit from there. They are going to be displaced from that residence. Crews have received that call about 7:45 in the morning. That was handled totally by City of St. Cloud units with no mutual aid assistance on that one. And then fire number three happened last night, which was over on Maryland Avenue. In that one, we had two civilian injuries and one firefighter with a very minor hand injury. Again, that house is pretty much condemned at this point, probably will not be rebuildable. So those residents have been displaced also. In all cases where the residents have been displaced, we reach out to Red Cross for their assistance for those family members. And then obviously, cause is under investigation for all three fires. We think we had the fire pretty well pinned down, or I'm sorry, the cause pinned down on two of them, the two residential ones. The transfer station fire, in the long run, will probably be listed as undetermined because, as you know, there's no telling what people throw out in their trash, and it actually started inside one of the trailers loaded with trash and progressed up into the building itself. For the fire department perspective, we've identified some efficiencies that we'll need to put in place in the future to handle such a situation. We've also been working with Mr. Gandor here as far as for and with the risk management from the city to replace some of our consumables and damaged items as far as where the insurance goes for that incident. And we've also identified some safety factors that would include enhancements to that facility in the future to rent such a fire, which would include a diluge sprinkler system inside of it. Any other questions from the fire side of things?
Going back to the transfer station, but the transfer station is usable at this point?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Gandor.
This is Naseem Gandor, Public Works Director. To answer your question, Mayor, the transfer station is usable in an operational sense. It sustained damages mostly on the skin, like the outside skin of the building, as well as one of our tractor trailer haulers. The trailer, trailers was damaged from that as well. We've inspected, we inspected the building on the inside to look at the, on the safety factor and the operational, to ensure that utilizing the building wasn't going to cause any kind of safety hazards for the people and the equipment using the building. So as of today, the transfer station house is in operations, however, with limitations, specifically to ensure that we're meeting our, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection permit requirements.
The city employee and rental residents and the fire on Maryland Avenue, do we know whatnot, that those individuals or families had insurance on? Did they lose their clothes?
That's unknown at this time. As far as the city residents, we haven't engaged. The city foundation, we dare to care to assist with that. I believe one of the other department directors could maybe address that more specifically. And that was the rental house. As far as the homeowners at the time, for the Maryland Avenue fire, the separate fire, we don't have any information to that effect. Luckily, that's not something the fire department gets too overly involved in.
On the Maryland Avenue location, did they lose their clothes?
I would say they pretty much lost everything, everything on that situation. Yes, sir. There were two bedrooms that were, I say relatively untouched, but that's kind of a stretching the limit a little bit. There was smoke damage inside those bedrooms. So some of that stuff could be salvageable, but obviously, it has to be retrieved from the house, washed a couple of times to get the smell of smoke out of it. The rest of the house was a total loss.
Do we have any other questions?
Thank you both for the updates on that, but I wanted to ask, Missine, just kind of a follow-up. So I saw on social media that the restrictions of the amount of debris that can be brought into the transfer station right now. So do you have any idea when those restrictions will be lifted?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me? Okay. So to answer your question specifically on the restrictions, and I can follow on some of the operational changes that we're moving forward on. So due to, with the fire, with us having to relocate our municipal solid waste location from the transfer station to another area within our boundaries being where construction debris is, we had to make the decision, we moved forward, limiting construction debris to no more than four yards. And also, with our established account customers, with the exception of our existing account customers, to bring them in. With that being said, you know, trying to ensure that we're servicing our primary customers being the residents of St. Cloud, as well as some of the businesses of St. Cloud as well, in order to determine exactly when we'll be able to turn on the, or excuse me, turn off the limitations of construction debris, we're going to be meeting with our consultant, Jones Edmonds, who helps manage our Florida Department of Environmental Protection permit, to determine some of the changes, operational changes we can do in order to free up that space. Because based on some feedback from the fire, the fire chief, in terms of ensuring that we're able to protect our assets, which means dispersing our assets. For example, if the fire had happened inside one of our other preloaded trucks, which was not stationed underneath the transfer house, it was, it would have been parked much closer to other vehicles, and would have been attached to a cab. And the cost of the damages would have been substantially more on that as well. So we're utilizing the space that we have in order to disperse our assets, in order to ensure that if something does happen in the future, that the fires, any kind of fires mitigate or isolate, excuse me, and isolate, and isolate area on that. So we're going through the process on that to rapidly trying to determine how we can maneuver our operations in order to ensure that we have the safety aspect and then go back to, as well as be able to address the customer aspect.
Okay. Do you have any kind of thoughts on timeline?
Timeline? If, I don't have the exact timeline on that. We're meeting with the consultant tomorrow morning, so I think it would be better, best to wait till we meet with the consultant to actually get a good idea of the timeline on that, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, because I've had a few contractors reach out to me about the restrictions on the construction debris. So after your meeting, and if you could just give a ballpark, is it a month? Is it a year? Is it, you know, just kind of a ballpark on?
Yes, ma'am, we'll definitely keep everyone updated.
That would be great. Thank you.
And if I have a minute, I would like to definitely thank the fire department being able to respond so rapidly, especially as well as the police department identifying that, because that definitely, time is an essence of a facility like that. But getting back into operations, not only would, you know, did we rely on the fire department and the police department, as well as their sister agencies, but definitely Parks and Rec, who was able to provide us additional personnel during this week in order to help relieve our other solid waste transfer station, your personnel, to take care of some other aspects. So with the combined teamwork, I think we were able to get back up, back up and running and considerable, considerable record time.
Great, thank you.
And if I could, one last thing.
Sure.
As the new fire chief, in the first 30 some odd days on the job, we've had kind of a unprecedented fire load happen in the city. I could not be more and prouder of our guys and girls there at the fire department. They've just stepped up, done an amazing job. If you remember back, starting in mid-December, it kind of kicked it all off with the fire down at Forever Florida and the snake thing. Our guys were the first truck there and had water on the fire. And there have just been, whether the fire's been in the city or the county, I think we're up to six or seven fires now in the last 30 some odd days surrounding the city. So our guys have been extremely busy, proud of them. One minor hand injury that really realistically, we had to document, but required a Band-Aid basically to fix. We're doing something right over there. We're handling the situations. Our people really are not getting injured, other than that small little thing. Wouldn't be possible without the police coordination on a lot of these incidents. Last night on the fire, they were actually there before us and gave us a great update as far as, they told us, you know, we had a patient on scene, told us the involvement of the fire. As far as for the transfer station fire, we had all of the Seams people out there helping coordinate some of the logistical aspects and the help we needed. We had the police department out there. City as a whole is a great team, and that goes to speak to not just the employees, but the leadership leading those employees. Couldn't be prouder of everybody here. Thank you.
I couldn't agree more. I was going to, I was going to kind of say the same thing of, it's nice that the department coordination between all the departments during, you know, incidents like that, I mean, it's great. I don't know, sorry. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you so much for all your hard work and your diligence, and we are grateful to know that we're in good hands. Thank you so much.
Can we do something about that sound?
It's like you say, there's some kind of static coming through here.
It's probably my new iWatch going through there.
All right, Mrs. Surgeon, you want to get us back to the?
Thank you, Mayor.
First item here?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I always tell my wife, I get to come to work every day and play Civilization, you know, the game. And we've been faced with a lot of challenges over the last year, the global pandemic that we've all had to deal with as a world, a nation, a state, and a locality. But through that, our staff has stepped up above and beyond, continued to provide a high level of service and excellent customer service is one of the mantras that I brought as a city manager. I really believe in customer service and service back to the community. With that said, we actually took an opportunity as a team to look at our strategic plan. And that was led by Deputy City Manager Veronica Miller and our business navigator, Abizmail Abrou. He stepped up, he's actually a recent graduate at UCF with a master's in public administration, and congratulated him for that. I told him I was going to embarrass him. But he and Ms. Miller have done the yeoman's work here on this strategic plan, and we've revised it. We think that the previous plan was effective, and we'll show you how it was effective. But we want to move more towards a strategic formula that includes objectives, benchmarks, and key performance indicators. If you look in front of you, we've laid out that process in this simple chart right here. The goal of this revised strategic plan, while keeping those six overreaching goals in perspective, is to move away from a project task-based plan towards a vision of what the city should look like and a strategic focus. As you know, we're one of the fastest-growing cities in the United States. In the next several weeks, Matrix should be completing the staffing study that we incorporated last year, which has been delayed several times for the loss of some of their personnel and the pandemic. But we're going to have to hire some people to continue to maintain that high level of service to our citizens. But the mindset of staff is to move from being reactive to more proactive moving into the future. I'll give you an example. Our utilities department, who does a great job, who provides quality water, wastewater, and reclaimed services to our community, spends the majority of their time reacting to system failures, as you know, turnoffs, turn-ons, service calls. But they should be out being proactive, replacing pipes, infrastructure, testing. We want to move the city more towards that function of all departments, but that's just an example. So today, we're going to show you the past, the business plan that we enacted in 2018, the present, what we're currently working on. But a majority of the time, I'd like to spend with you this evening is talking about the future, the strategic plan for the next fiscal year. We're getting ready to start into the budget process and requesting vision and strategic goals from this council. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Abrou to go through the presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks for this opportunity. Abizmail Abrou, Business Navigator for the City of St. Cloud. And I'm going to be the presenter here of the past, so I'll give the city council a overview of what was done in the amazing year that was 2020. Before I do all that, I would like to give a little bit of background of what it is that you see in that presentation, as well as point out that in your packet there, if you can, if you would like to follow along, is this document right here.
There you go.
What's the title page say on the document? I can't see it from that far.
2018 to 2023 Business Plan Status.
Business Plan Status?
Yes.
That should be right after about the first five or six pages.
Correct. I'll summarize it in the PowerPoint here, but if you'd like to follow along. Perfect. So our business plan has 74 total items, and to make it easier to read, easier to understand, city staff went ahead and grouped them into categories. So before I start the presentation, I would like to provide you with a definition of what category means. This first one is self-explanatory. We have the completed category, which is business plan items with a specified ending date that have all aspects successfully completed. The second category is continuous items. These are items in the business plans without an established end time, and these are to be completed annually as part of day-to-day operations of the city. The third category is in-progress items. These are items that have been started and significant progress have been made. And lastly, we have the non-started category, which are the business plan items that have not been started yet or no significant progress have been done of. Out of the 74 items in the business plan that was adopted in 2018, the city has completed a total of 17 of them. 32 of them are continuous items that the city is currently doing annually. 14 of them are in progress, and 11 are currently not started. Moving forward, in the presentation, I will go through each item, provide a brief overview of the status, as well as highlight of the past fiscal year. And all this is summarized in that packet, if you'd like to later refer to it. And as well as, we'd like to proudly announce that all this information is available online for the public to see in the city website and under stcloud.org/businessplan. Stcloud.org/businessplan is the website where you can see in detail everything the city has done. So moving on with the economic development business plan, out of the 18 total business plan items, the city has completed a total of five. Seven of those are continuous items being worked on yearly. A total of four in progress, and two have not been started yet. And I would like to show the highlight that out of this business plan item, the economic development side, the city rebranding is the prize jewel that was started in the, in last fiscal year, and as you can see, last city council meeting, great advancement was done in the city rebranding. Moving on to the growth management business plan items, there's a total of nine. And currently, four have been completed, three are continuous, one in progress, and one's not started. Highlighting there is the implementation of the ambitious St. Cloud strategies into city's master plan, the downtown revitalization, as well as the Florida Avenue Trail that's being worked on as we speak. In the infrastructure side, out of 18 items, currently, we have three completed, continuous, just one in progress, six of them, and not started. We have a total of eight. The highlight here will be for the past fiscal year is phase two of the Downtown Striscapes project that's proceeding right now. We move to our financial sustainability goal, and out of seven items, the city completed two, and five of them are done as day-to-day business of the city. The highlight for last fiscal year is the Impact Fee Study contract that's currently on the way and being worked on. On the public service side, 12 total items, one completed, eight continuous, and three currently in progress. The highlight from last fiscal year, as you may know, social media interaction was enhanced and helped to, we helped bring residents closer to the business of city government through it. Also, we were forced to introduce virtual meetings due to the COVID-19, and quickly adapted day-to-day business of the city to facilitate the delivery of such. So it's something to be proud of in the city. And lastly, for the professional workforce, we have 10 total items on this business plan. We have eight continuous and two completed. A highlight from last fiscal year is that the city maintains city operations and staff throughout the pandemic and devised innovative and creative ways of delivering services. A training coordinator was hired to establish a training program for city employees, and classification, compensation, and benefit studies will go out to bid to make, to achieve some of the items that are still there on the continuous side. Perfect. So that was the presentation of the past, and also, we'd like to give a presentation of what the city is currently working on. So despite the COVID-19 associated complications, we just want to ensure and guarantee the council that the city staff continues to work towards these strategic goals. And if you have the packet there, we've provided to the council as reference so that you can review later on, so you can see what the city is currently working on, starting with this page. That's our current fiscal year work plan, departmental work plan, and it's summarized there for you and classified by goal. So I would like to introduce our facilitator for today, and then she will be taking part of the future of this presentation with the review of the strategic goal, Mariema Bacho.
Thank you, sir. Just a quick programming note, Jay and Mark tell me that that feedback that we're getting sporadically is actually coming from devices. So if you hear a noise and your watch is close to the microphone or your phone, just try moving them away, because it's been coming from a couple of different mics, so. So as Abizmail said, we were actually joking earlier today that he was going to be the ghost of Christmas past and present, and I was going to be the ghost of Christmas future today. So we wanted to spend the bulk of our time talking about the future and having council kind of help us review these goals and set strategic priorities that we can use in our budgeting process for next year and as we move forward, looking to move the city ahead. Staff recognized the need to revise our strategic goal statements to conform to the city's and the world's current and future conditions. In reviewing the current strategic goals, there were four goals that we are proposing revisions to, those being growth management, infrastructure, public service, and professional workforce. So we'll start with the growth management goal. Currently, that is to create a vibrant, progressive, and diverse community through collaborative planning. The proposal from staff is to revise that to, to create a vibrant, progressive, and diverse community through sustainable planning for all generations. So we would like to just pause here for a minute and get reaction and response from council, any questions that you might have on that or feedback.
Could you explain a little bit further your thoughts on that? I think I understand, I think I get it, but, and I think it's...
Andre, would you? Is Andre here?
Good afternoon, Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. In redrafting this goal, we wanted to ensure that it applied universally to all residents of the City of St. Cloud. And to simply just say vibrant, progressive, and diverse community through collaborative planning did not say very much, because we can have collaborative planning and still not really accomplished much. So we wanted to make sure that in moving forward, we identify very distinctive objectives that would follow. So the key phrases here in our, in our goal is that it be vibrant, that it be progressive, diverse, and finally, sustainable. And out of those four, what I call pillars of this goal, we want to ensure we have a healthy environment, we want to have opportunities for employment, we want to have places to live, work, and play, and we also want to address equity and environmental justice. And as a planner, I like to have acronyms to kind of guide our process, so those words spell out the word "hope." And so for growth management, what we do provides for "hope," healthy environment, "H," opportunities for employment, "O," places to live, work, and play, "P," and equity and environmental justice. So under the tenet of vibrant, we're talking about a place. And so everything that we do, some of those keywords would be urban, high-density, walkable, activity centers, mixed-use, sense of place, historic preservation. So those are the types of things that we look for in trying to ensure that the places that we create are for live, work, and play. When we talk about progressive, that talks about opportunities for the future. And so those keywords that we look for there in trying to implement that would be centered around high-tech, high-value jobs, a connected city, employment opportunities, targeted industries, jobs-to-housing balance, and innovative urban design. When we talk about diverse, we're talking about equity, and the key words here that we would want to address is housing choices, inclusive, equitable development, expanded demographic and socioeconomic range. demographic and socioeconomic range, community engagement, and environmental justice. And then when we talk about sustainable, we're talking about health of the community. And the keywords here that we would work toward would be protecting the environment, community resiliency, the rural-to-urban transition, air quality, water quality, recreation, and open space. So all those four then leads, and I don't want to preempt you, but leads into the four objectives that would implement this goal. Questions?
Have any questions?
I got one. What is environmental justice?
Yes.
Is this a, is this a new police force?
No. Environmental justice has to do with protecting and making sure that resources are available to everyone. And so, for instance, when you're locating, say, a landfill, you know, put it just in the low-income neighborhoods, you ensure that placement of what we call NIMBYs are done in a way that provides opportunities, equal opportunities for everyone, and that you don't discriminate and place the quote-unquote "bad" things in the low-income or less advantageous neighborhoods.
I've just never heard it called that. I don't know if that's like an industry term or...
That's really a legal term. I mean, it's used in law a lot of times with EPA and those agencies.
Okay.
It's a superpower.
Planner speak, not engineering speak.
Yeah.
So as you're, you know, going through that, I was kind of looking at the vision, mission, and organizational values of the city, and it does flow well with that, and I like the additions to it. Because really, it was the sustainable planning for all generations was the big add, right?
Yeah, I mean, the addition of the all generations, what I've noticed here is, we have an elderly population, but we don't really necessarily have policies that are directed at those, that community. And so we want to ensure that by making our community walkable, we also are addressing needs of the elderly. So we'll be working very closely with AARP. They have a lot of policies on walkability and citizen engagement, and so we want to make sure that we take advantage of those resources because they're, they have a lot of funding also that they'll provide for like, you know, assisting with how to make, you know, homes more livable as they age, as well as, you know, making the community, the neighborhoods more safer, you know, not just necessarily from crime, but just safer in terms of walking sidewalks and so on, and trees and things like that.
I like it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along, our next goal that we were recommending changes to was the infrastructure goal. Currently, that is to provide safe and adequate infrastructure to meet current and future needs. The proposal is to update that to provide safe, sustainable, and resilient infrastructure for the community. So you hear again some of these themes that we just heard from Andre regarding resiliency and sustainability as we move forward to the future across our community.
Any question?
Again, I like it, specifically the addition of resilient, because some of the issues, especially right now, we're having with infrastructure on the stormwater, sanitary, water side of things, on, you know, road repaving, all of that, just resiliency is something that is big.
All right. We will move ahead to our public service goal, which currently states to ensure cost-effective service while providing a high level of service to our internal and external customers. The proposal is to update that to provide an effective high level of service to all internal and external customers.
I think it says the same thing, it's just simpler, easier to grab a hold of statement. Any...
Yeah, without the cost.
Yep. I like it.
Okay. We'll proceed on to our professional workforce goal. Currently states to attract and retain highly skilled staff in order to provide services to the community. We're proposing to update it to build a values-based organization dedicated to developing and retaining qualified talent who provide exceptional services to the community.
What are those values that you have in mind? Have you defined those, Asim?
That's our next slide. Funny we should ask because we're recommending adding one.
Sir, I like that definition. You guys jump in if you'd rather.
Is your red light on? Jay, we've lost Bill's mic. I guess Bill gets to go home.
Talk into your watch.
There you go.
Thought you were being funny, huh?
There you go. Bill's back.
Okay, I'm back. Thanks. So those core values are on the next slide.
Good, okay.
So we'll go ahead and go to that, and we can go back if we need to. Currently, our core values are civility, integrity, professionalism, transparency, responsibility, excellence, and responsiveness, and our team is proposing adding teamwork to those core values.
That's a lot. If you live up to all those values, you'll be, you'll have an incredible team. I like teamwork.
Any questions?
I like the organizational values before, and I like the addition of teamwork.
Okay, great.
And just when you go back to the professional workforce, so what's kind of the tie between, I don't know if we're calling them core values, on my sheet from last year it was organizational values, and then it's just build a values-based organization. Just want to make sure like nomenclatures kind of ties together to where, you know, it makes sense.
I like that. Maybe reorganize the first sentence, like build a, build a workforce to, I mean, you guys can wordsmith it, but build a workforce to meet the values, you know, somehow, build a values-based organization is a little clunky to me, like maybe rearrange it.
Yeah. Because I mean, whether it's organizational values, core values, I think it's, I think it's good. We just, yeah, maybe tweak it some.
Just wordsmith it a little.
Yeah.
All right. Great, thank you. Okay. And with that, we will move on to our proposed strategic plan process. And Bill, I think that's you.
As I mentioned in the beginning, want to move towards more of a proactive stance and looking at the future. We want to do that based on demonstration of key performance indicators. You'll see some of these in the next couple of slides, and I have staff here prepared to explain each of those. So I'm asking for your direction to move forward with this plan using this new process based on the strategic formula that I gave you in my presentation at the beginning. The current strategic plan has strategic goal statements and a list of tasks. However, there's no measurement of objectives or initiatives that will demonstrate the city is actually accomplishing these goals. It either happened or it didn't happen. By adding objectives, benchmarks, and key performance indicators, the city will be able to measure the levels of service being provided and measure how well we are working towards accomplishing our strategic goals. The new process will paint a better picture for staff, council, and residents. The proposals, let me make sure I'm on the right slide, thank you. Provides city staff direction to achieve strategic goals, prioritizes initiatives within the strategic goals, and the key benchmarks and key performance indicators, accountability, transparency, uses data to show results, and aids in our decision-making process. And I could go back to my old background a little bit in public safety. It's so important that you demonstrate performance levels. How are you hitting those goals and objectives? And I think we devised a way to do that. The measurable language of priorities that have been identified as key initiatives for the city to be able to accomplish those strategic goals. Each strategic goal will have three to four objectives to which city staff will work to complete to satisfy the language of each strategic goal statement. That's why it's important we have those definitions up front because it really leads us into those objectives we've reworked. With measurable objectives come the use of data to show the progress, the progress of completion by establishing benchmarks. The city strives to provide services that are viewed as internal and/or external best practices. Benchmarking numbers will be added to each KPI report. This will allow the city to compare current city levels of services with other agencies and city policies to measure if we are meeting and/or exceeding our benchmark numbers. These KPIs will be used as transparency and accountability tools. The data will be displayed online to anyone to see at any time on the Open Club platform. Now my phone's going off. KPI reports will be used to aid in decision-making by having data to back up city decisions. Now I'll turn it back over to Mr. Abru.
So looking first at economic development. Proposed objective 1.1 is to ensure goods and services are available to meet current and future population demands. And you see our KPIs there. The first is the performance or percentage of initial new commercial construction inspections completed within two business days of the request. Best practices benchmark is 80%, so that will be our key performance indicator that will give us a concrete measure by which we can gauge how the city is performing. And then our second KPI will be the number of businesses assisted per fiscal year. The city strives to reach out and help a minimum of 30 businesses per year through the development process or other permitting processes needed to start a business, and you'll see there are benchmark of 30.
And then when we, when we talk about some of these benchmarks, are there other cities that are measuring some of these and just to see kind of where they're at?
Correct. This type of information is gathered, quote-unquote, benchmarking with other municipalities and organizations such as ICMA. And there's a data sharing hub that they have, and information can be gathered there by benchmarking with municipalities with our same type of demographics and that they're similar to us, so yes.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Moving on to 1.2, objective assist businesses seeking to boost productivity and workforce. You'll see our KPIs there, the amount of physical incentives issued per fiscal year, benchmark of a minimum of $50,000 awarded per year until funds are depleted. The amount of businesses issued financial incentives per fiscal year, again, it's a minimum of 15 businesses who seek help while funds last. The number of jobs retained through city involvement and economic development strategies, benchmark being 40. And finally, the number of businesses receiving technical assistance from the city and/or partner agencies on business development and expansion, and the benchmark there would be five.
And then when I, when I think of some of these economic development goals, I think through, you know, how like the, most of the state agencies and some of the local agencies, they try to, you know, go out and, you know, steal company A from, you know, other states or whatever. I think we have a lot of great businesses here in St. Cloud that need that assistance to grow or just, you know, figuring out ways that maybe they, like a Mary Trail had to, had to technically move out of the city because they didn't have any room to grow or they couldn't find another property. So just that kind of assistance, is that just the number of businesses receiving technical assistance, is that kind of where we plug that?
That will deal more with information given by partner agencies such as Prospera that helps mostly Hispanic businesses, information from the, or technical workshop given by the Chamber of Commerce, those type, those type of technical assistance that is mediated through the city's economic development office and our partners. So that's what, when we're referring to that in this specific one. So if you have any type of request, that's something that you would like to see, that's something that we can also explore.
Okay. Because I just think of like, if we get 20 small businesses here that each add one job that's 20 versus, you know, some of the state agencies throw tens of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars of trying to get 10 jobs coming in. So I don't know if there's just something we can do there.
Andre.
Just want to, I guess I'm on VOX. Mary Trail still gives me chest pain, just want to let you know that.
Thank you. So just to follow up on that and what you were asking, part of our technical assistance also is about job training and retraining, especially with the pandemic. We have gone through a process and we're working with Valencia, Curacao, and Ossia County on the Growth Wheel 360 for our technical assistance there for, you know, the new buzzword is pivoting and allowing businesses to rebrand themselves. And so that's part of, it'll exist that we'll be looking at as we move forward. Right now, we are discussing some initiatives with Curacao, and we've also talked with Orlando Health because they are looking to obviously expand in the city, and they will need workforce. And Curacao and Valencia is looking to do training in the medical industry for medical personnel for Orlando Health. So that's, you know, additional things that we are doing in the area of technical assistance. So we may be coming back to you later for more money, so just stay tuned.
At least he's honest.
Yeah.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Personally, I like the benchmarks and the KPIs. I think it's, it's going to be a useful tool. Like what the city manager was saying, you know, in our prior, it was either it happened or it didn't, you know, you didn't really have any toggle between. The thing that I find floating around in the back of my mind is, for example, these benchmarks that are listed on this table, well, how did we do last year? You know, so we're saying our amount of financial incentives issued per fiscal year, and we're saying the benchmark is 50. What did we do last fiscal year? Or, you know, a number of businesses issued financial incentives, how did we do last year? Because I don't really know, are those good benchmarks for us or not, or goals? You know, like maybe, maybe last year we gave about $200,000, so 50 isn't a good number for us. I mean, it'd be nice to maybe, you know, take all of these and provide us a column that says what we did last fiscal year, just so we can kind of go, you know what, we really need to bump this up, or maybe this isn't a reasonable goal for us this first year, maybe we'll ratchet up as we go. I would like to see historical information.
I do have that, but how can we get it? I do have that. Yes, I do have that information. I don't know if there's a way that maybe we can connect to, no? Yeah. But, but yes, we can provide you with that link. We have that information right now. And in part of, we have two Open Gov sites. We have the business plan one, and I also worked on another one that's specifically for this KPI. We haven't rolled out to the public pending this meeting, of course. So that information is there, and those benchmarks that we have identified there is using that data from the past fiscal years. Because we, obviously, we would not like to recommend anything that's not attainable, and just matching those past performances, we came up with these numbers.
Abizmail, if I gave you my iPad, could you pull it up and as we're discussing it, tell us what we had last year?
Well, and just to, just for clarity on my sake, you guys are looking for comments based on the ideas of this, not specific like numbers and this and that? That's something for you guys to, you and your team to set kind of through the, through the year? Or do you want like, no, I think it should be 10 instead of 12?
I think they're wanting the goal in the benchmark.
I think what we're looking for is like goal and benchmark relevant, and what Council Member Mathini, I agree with what she's saying, so what are we measuring it against? We do have that number, but we'll, we'll see if we can get that up and go through it. Yeah, we didn't just pull these out of the sky, but I think we probably could have...
Yeah, I know you're not trying to overload us with information or data on here, but, you know, just, there's a balancing act, right? Because the fiscal ones are the ones I have a bunch of questions on.
Councilmember Mathini, I just wanted to put, just to provide a system explanation that while we can provide the comparison of last year's numbers, remember that last year was an extraordinary year for assistance, and so we probably have...
year was an extraordinary year for assistance and so we probably have very high numbers of assistance that we would not normally have in a regular year. So to establish a higher standard might be a, a task that we can't accomplish, so we just need to be cautious about that.
Sure, I mean, if you had a couple of years of data, I'd take that.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can definitely do like a, a couple of years of data to kind of see when, when it was normal, because last year was just an odd, an odd year to provide assistance.
Yeah, I mean, I'd take a couple of years of data. I was just trying to be nice and just say one.
And, and, and just so you know, when we did get the numbers, we did try to make sure that it was a number that's not necessarily the average, but something that we can kind of have a little bit of a room for growth as well.
Yeah, I, I call them stretch objective. We want to find out where that delta is, but we want to pull ourselves above that. We don't want to just say we're just going to be normal. We want to be better than that and be proactive and pull ourselves up. So those numbers we think are attainable in a smart goal, you know, specific measurable, achievable, realistic and time-bound, but can we pull ourselves to that? So we want to keep striving for a higher level. Hopefully, we can pull this up.
Who all went to St. Cloud Middle School? Anybody? Anybody? St. Cloud Middle? No. Do, okay, I knew, yeah. Do you remember what it said as you walked in the door, as painted on, above the door?
Well, my head, it was 30 something.
Striving for excellence. Remember that was painted over the front doors?
I was a Seahawk, sorry.
Oh, no, here we go.
Yeah.
Do we need these numbers now? Can we move on?
I just, I mean, I just can't really, I mean, I like the idea, but.
I understand your point.
Right.
What are we measuring against?
What are we measuring against, right? If you're just wanting direction, if we're doing the KPI and the benchmarks, I'm fine moving forward.
It's not my watch.
Well, this is a good indicator, better than, you know, you would come to us and go, we, we have an extra 100 permits we pulled this year. Okay, but those could be simple permits or new building permits. So I like that, that this is an easier way to go, yeah, you guys are kicking butt down there, or, you know, we can actually put a number to it.
We'll give it a, a couple more minutes, Mayor, and if not, we'll move on.
Okay.
Please.
You can always come back.
I see fingers crossed. Right.
And perhaps when we say it, if we're saying a specific benchmark that was a unique situation, the director can come address that?
Yes.
Perfect. So just going back on this one's here, let's do the first one. Amount of financial incentives issued per fiscal year.
Should we go back to 1.1?
Perfect, okay. So 1.1, the initial new commercial construction inspection within two days, 80%, and that's, that's an industry best standard. So there's no, we haven't been collecting that for the, for the city as of right now. But that's the industry best practice there. And then number of businesses assisted per fiscal year. On 2019, we assisted 51 in total. And last fiscal year, we only assisted 16. We were obviously working from home most of the time. So that's why the huge disparity in numbers there. And 1.2, amount of financial incentives issued per fiscal year. On 2019, 49,000. Last fiscal year, we have 58,000, and it should be a lot more now after the whole COVID assistance, grants that we're giving out. And number of jobs retained, we have 30 and 60 the next fiscal year. And number of businesses receiving technical assistance, we have 36 in 19 and 7 last fiscal year.
Five seems kind of low.
See, if you would like to increase that, what number would be a good one that satisfies?
They've already exceeded their goals.
I didn't hear you, Mayor.
So it's like they've almost already exceeded their goals.
Right, right. Like if you, and I, if we take 2020 out as an anomaly, it's like we did 49,000 in, in 2019, so 50 doesn't seem like much of a stretch. But I know we're going to have budget challenges, but then, number of businesses receiving technical assistance, I think five's a little low. Going to do 20?
I'd rather name it something missing, name it nothing hidden, so.
Yeah.
Don't mind stretching ourselves.
Do you want to do 20 on that one? They did 36 in 2019.
Any objections to 20? No? 20.
All right, moving forward to 1.3. The KPI would be, or the objective would be to foster and establish partnerships with local and regional organizations that can expedite planning and business development. And our performance indicator would be the number of city-sponsored special events per fiscal year to spur economic development. That benchmark is proposed to be set at five, and Abizmail, where we're being?
Currently have four each fiscal year. So we're expanding moving forward.
Okay.
Can you, what, what are those events, by the way?
Events such as, rocking the cloud, paint the city green, events that, the monthly market, the downtown monthly market, the events that are sponsored by city.
Parade, I would assume.
Christmas parade.
And Christmas tree lighting. Okay.
Stephanie had to step out. She wanted me to, that right now, she would be gone for just a few minutes, so.
She sounded real well.
Culinary bicycle tour, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Correct, yes, events like that.
I'm surprised we only do four right now, like, because you just listed.
That's six.
A bunch there. The monthly market, do you only count that once, or do you count it every time you have it?
Just once.
Could I just grab the record? The events that are referenced here for economic development is not the Christmas tree lighting and those events. It's events that economic development hopes, such as the Economic Summit or the Business Meeting with the bankers, those types of events that we can collaborate with those individuals to spur economic development and business planning.
Opportunity Zone 1, too. Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Like the Economic Development Summit and things like that.
Yes, and of course, we have, we have had to postpone it because of COVID and keep, keep rescheduling it. So our, our plan is and intent is to have at least five in any fiscal year. If we have more, that's great, but right now, we've been so challenged just trying to even have one because we keep having to reschedule. We had the last one with the SBA and others, those types of events.
Okay, so maybe we just change the description to be like city-sponsored economic development or economic opportunities.
It is part of economic development, set of goals, but yeah, we can definitely clarify further.
Perfect. I think five's good because that's, those are the ones I attended, the Opportunity Zone and the, what was the other big one? The, the summit one?
The banker's summit.
Economic Development Summit and Banker's Summit.
Bankers Roundtable, things like that.
Those took a lot of effort and they were great events, so I think that's good.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to growth management. First proposed objective would be updating the comprehensive plan and the land development code to include smart growth principles that promote an attractive and strong sense of place to create an urban, historic downtown, walkable and connected neighborhoods and mixed-use centers which exhibit innovative urban design. KPIs, the first one would be the city's comprehensive plan amendments per fiscal year. Benchmark set at three. Andre, do you want to speak to each of these individually or?
I don't have data in front of me to, to really speak to them. I mean, I guess Abizmail has that information, he can say it, and if there's clarification, I can offer that.
I, I do know that on the walkability score, you see the proposed benchmark of 50, which would be a somewhat walkable city. And currently, the city is a 27 or car-dependent, so.
And also understand that while we list it as 50, we're striving for much more than that because the whole idea of making it a city walkable, you know, we probably want to get it at 75. And by the way, this number is out of 100, so 50 is really just the midpoint. So 75 and greater is your ideal walkable city. And the additional benefits or result of that type of walk score is what a lot of people use to determine how healthy a city might be, just because of the ability to walk a lot and get fresh air and so on.
And then, so over the next five years through this goal, goal period, you guys are implementing land use or comprehensive plan changes and land development code changes to implement that and increase that, that walkability score?
That is correct. We will ensure that developments all have sidewalks, that they're interconnected and that they're denser, and create active centers for people to walk to that are close by and create better opportunities for other modes of mobility rather than just the car. And, you know, we, we already started that process, for instance, with working on, you know, the multi-use trail from the downtown to the lakefront and creating those other opportunities.
And then, do we have a timeline on the future land use element?
Yes, we do. So we, we, and actually, that might be part of this proposition ultimately, I think. But, um, yes, we do. I, I think I may have said before, February 1 is our deadline to provide a letter to the state, letting them know how, what we're going to do as far as our evaluation and appraisal of, report of our comprehensive plan. And we've broken into phase one and phase two. So for phase one of the future land use element, we will have that completed by February 1 of 2021 because we have to address any statutory requirement that's not currently in our plan since 2014. 2014 was the last time that the city offered any letter of, of recognition regarding our ear, and we have got, we get updated every seven years. So, so by February 1, we sent a letter saying, here's what we're going to do. So phase one is any statutory requirement, phase two, year 2022. But, so what we're going to do is have the population projections and the, the base things that are necessary to complete that element. And depending on staffing, we should, we maybe even get it done sooner and have, you know, a map that lays out uses and incorporates Envision St. Cloud and, you know, identifying the areas for employment, industrial areas and so on on our, on our future land use map.
Okay, because I just, I just want to make sure it all doesn't develop before we get a chance to, to outline that.
No.
You sound like me.
All right.
Any further discussion on this one?
Moving on.
All right. Proposed objective 2.2 is to update the comprehensive plan and land development code to support environmental planning and resource conservation policies through the promotion of efficient land development patterns and alternative mobility strategies to achieve a resilient and healthy environment.
And the reason there is no performance indicators for this one at this time is because it's focused more on environmental issues and we're working closely with, at this point, Marjorie from Avaro Utilities to look at how we would update the conservation element of a comprehensive plan. And once we've worked on that, we will then develop some performance indicators associated with that.
What would be the timeline for that? Is that just something FY '22?
That also was, if I grab my notes. Okay, so for conservation, we are looking at, I think it was 2021, I mean, next year. I think this is the old one, this is not the updated one. I think it's 2022, I mean, one year from now.
Yeah, but you guys have a, a date that you guys will, once you do that in the throat.
Yes, I have made a sign to all these, yes.
Any further questions or discussion on this one? All right, we will move on to 2.3. The objective would be to develop a connected opportunity for regional employment or core program that promotes high-tech, high-value jobs through implementation of the city's target industries. The KPIs would be the employment housing ratio, which is basically your total employment divided by your total occupied housing units. A ratio of anywhere between 0.75 to 1.5 means fewer people are commuting outside the city for employment, so that would be our benchmark, as well as the city striving to have one ready site for targeted industries per fiscal year.
Do we have any data on what's the benchmark now for the housing ratio?
0.75 is, is, is the typical average. It's just under one. One basically means it's a one-to-one, you know, one every job. And so if you have more than one, you're actually bringing people in to the city.
Okay, but do we, what's the number right now?
Our number, oh, I, I didn't calculate it. We can, we can get that information for you.
Okay, just curious.
Well, this is certainly a big important issue because I think this is something we get a lot of, of feedback on. When are you going to bring, it's like, you know, we, we can wave a wand to bring commercial development to our city. I think what we have to do is that, you know, you gotta let them know we are open and we just gotta certainly continue to market our city more. Because with the growth that we had, I think we're certainly in a position to provide employment to targeted industries, but we need to find out what, what we think those targeted industries ought to be. And I, I know this is a real challenge, but it's a real important one. But we certainly need to make a, continue to make a priority. And I think part of that is continuing to do everything we can to collaborate with the county, with the recent developments taking place over at Neo City and the Bridge. I think that has, again, great prospects for us and that's, just needs to stay on our radar. What can we do to bring more, bring industry, high-paying industry to, to our corner of the planet? So I think that's a, that's an important one. Any other comment?
So what do we need to do to hit, hit these?
Yeah.
Or, or? Or exceed them, right? Like, what, what changes do we need to make? What things need to be funded? Like, is there any, I know there's the, the whole next level of the work plan, but, I guess.
So I asked Andre what he has right now drafted in his work plan in order to accomplish it. That's what he's looking for.
Yeah, it just comes down to an easier selling point when I can explain to the citizens, you know what, every time that this happens, we're getting better employment ratings. We have data to prove it.
That's a, that's a big help.
Yeah.
So we don't have anything identified at this time. At this point, we're just, that's an objective, and we're going to have to start working towards, towards those objectives. And we know that that's the benchmark that we want to achieve. When we start, most likely, we'll have room for improvement, but at least we know what we're trying to get to.
Okay, we could be there right now, but.
Probably not.
Well, until you give me the date, we don't know.
We'll figure out where we're at. We'll do that calculation.
You're gonna need that number right now.
Yeah, based on St. Cloud, of the vision St. Cloud, if you recall, you know, of the population of folks that are eligible for work, 90% commits out. So, yeah, so, no, we're not meeting that number.
I don't want to get technical. I think it's 93%. Yeah, just get that number. I mean, even if you start it with, and start the number now, I think down the road, future council is going to be looking to that. That's a big indicator.
Well, and it's a matter of new things coming in, hit this, which then help fix that problem for, for some of the older stuff. And then, I guess, first way to get this going is the, the land use element, right? Let's get the, the map figured out, hold back the areas for this.
The map is, is, I think, going to be important to, to that effort and identifying good sites, which we're working with, all you see on their site selection process, so we can identify some good sites for larger employers to then move that number up.
To make sure that infrastructure is there ready for it.
That's correct, and that's why we, we had one of the, to have a project-ready site, so that they can just come right in.
Okay, excellent.
All right, moving forward to 2.4. Improve the quality of life for St. Cloud residents, businesses, and visitors through high-quality mixed-use developments that provides for environmental justice and choices, increases property values, and which improves the appearance of the city. And our identified KPIs are mixed-use zoning projects approved per fiscal year, as well as maintaining property values by having residential development value around $250,000.
I think you're there, but, okay.
And then, do we need to, I guess, as you guys go through this process every year, you'll, you'll look back at the previous year and figure out kind of where we are with those? Because, you know, one new mixed, mixed-use zoning project approved, but then it's just, how are the, the ones that were approved before performing?
So you want us tracking previous developments? Is that what you're asking?
You know, just, just to make sure that the things that were approved in the past and the way they were are actually beneficial to where then you'd do the same thing or better things moving forward.
We can do that.
So I think when we did the annexation workshop, kind of worked, walked through some of that, as some of the previous ones that were approved and how it's beneficial.
Right, when we showed with the GIS map what the, what the property values were, and we could see based on density what the values were.
Which I believe we're tracking a little bit higher than we thought when it comes to especially electricity. Per month, we're bringing in a pretty good chunk of change, but I don't think we factored that in, so.
We're, we're going to be having another workshop in the future, so.
Do we want to raise the valuation of the house? I mean, 250 is kind of low now.
I just want to point out, we, we do have some affordable housing needs in the city also.
All right.
So what are, are you averaging? What's the?
Well, I think this is 250,000. When we did envision was what it was the, the minimum needed to have the cost of services covered by, by the property taxes. So it should be our goal. I'm just, as you think of a new value, I just wanted to point out that there is an affordable housing need before we say 600,000.
Well, maybe you exempted out affordable, I don't know. Maybe there's, it's not just like a one number thing, but I know when we asked the question at the last, when Councilmember Cooper asked the question at the last meeting, what was the average value of the homes? It was 400, in the 400s. So I think 250 is a pretty low bar for us to just say for the city. I mean, maybe there needs to be some, maybe there needs to be some categories or something.
We can look further into it.
Yeah, because we also, we want those 500,000-plus-dollar houses, and we also need workforce housing as well, so, just figuring out what that middle point is.
So I guess a town home would drop into the 250 range, I would assume.
Mayor, and if I recall, I think Steve McDonald did to the GA when we did the annexation, last discussion we had, he did validate it at 250 based on his analysis.
Right.
And again, I understand that's an opinion-based analysis, but he's very conservative. But I, I think you're correct, Mr. Askew, that it is tracking higher than that. We'll, we'll work on that number.
All right, if there's no further discussion on that one, we will move forward. To 3.1, create conveniently located spaces for interactions and exchanges to enhance a sense of community with a focus on environmental initiatives such as increased tree-covered spaces, clean water in lakes, and green facilities. And our proposed performance indicators would be the percentage of city parks within a 10-minute drive for every resident of the city. City would be striving for 90%. And a citizen satisfaction survey with the city parks, and the benchmark would be to have 70% of survey respondents indicate satisfaction with city parks in the, in the city.
I know we have benchmarks on that based on the master plan.
Correct. Master plan and our current data right now, which we are hitting those benchmarks.
When we did the parks master plan, I thought there was a different KPI that they used. I thought it was percentage of residents within, not percentage of city parks within 10-minute drive. It was the same one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. So it says, create conveniently located spaces for interaction that exchanges to enhance a sense of community, focus on environmental initiatives such as increased tree-covered spaces, clean water slash lakes, and green facilities. So the performance indicators don't seem to speak to those goals in my mind, like increased tree-covered spaces. So, I mean, when you say increased tree-covered spaces, are you strictly talking about parks? I mean, I don't know, like, are we doing something in the city? Where are the city of trees? So are we doing something to increase tree cover aside from a park? Like, are we going to change some ordinances or rules or something to try to? I don't know if we ever got an answer to something that four years ago, Councilmember Askew said about, there was some historic tree next to a house, and based on our rules, he would have to pay more money to try to save the tree than if he just tore the tree down, and was there ways that we could, you know, work on that? I just, to me, the performance indicators, maybe clean water and lakes, like, percentage of city parks within a 10-minute drive and citizen satisfaction with city parks, it doesn't talk to those goals to me.
Yeah, so currently, how we're, the tree-covered spaces, so, you know, we maintain the trees in, in the right of way. This is just one program we offer. So if we take down a tree in the right of way, and it's actually, you know, somebody is to believe it's their tree in their yard, we actually take the tree down and then we replace it with two trees for them to plant in their, on their property, so they maintain it. But that's how we, we pay through the, pay for the trees through the tree bank fund. So that's one way we're increasing the trees.
And Councilmember Matheny, just to answer or maybe get a little bit more clarification, I believe you're asking for maybe a KPI to show.
Yeah, what's the KPI that leads to more trees, and what's the KPI that leads to clean water and lakes? Like, are we increasing water quality requirements? Or, I don't know, like, it just seems like these two performance indicators don't really speak to that goal.
We can, we can explore and look as well, and bring something forward.
That'd be great. Yeah, we, we also, for the clean water and lakes, so we take four samples from the east, or actually, the south side of the lake, and then over there by Chisholm, four-time, quarterly, we take four samples, so that's how we keep track of the water quality in those areas.
How do they measure that, Stephanie? I mean, what's the benchmark?
It just seems to me, it's, I don't disagree, like, your programs are great, and I'm glad that we do that, to take the tree down and give it to you. I love it. I'm just saying, to me, these two performance indicators don't tie to this increasing tree-covered spaces, clean water lakes, and green facilities.
So I think the first one's just speaking to the conveniently located spaces, but we can also on here just start tracking the, the results of Stephanie's reports, and she can work maybe with DEP and ask them, you know, for a benchmark that, that we could begin to provide. You know, being that this was the first year that we took, or we undertook something like this, we were trying to have manageable new information, and, and we saw there was several areas that we might not be currently collecting data, but that we want to start collecting data. So as you're seeing these with great suggestions like that, you know, let us know, and we can start, start adding those. So it might be that, you know, we don't have past history on that, but then we'll start.
Well, I'm definitely not, like, poo-pooing this process. I like it. I'm just, maybe, to me, create conveniently located spaces for interactions and exchanges to enhance a sense of community, that's your objective. Well, then, their performance indicators are appropriate, right? There's so many within a 10-minute drive, and there's satisfaction, but then, maybe there's something like focus on, maybe you break it out into a subcategory and say, increased tree-covered spaces, clean water, and then you have a different goals and objectives for that. I don't know that this is the place to track your water quality sampling, I, I don't know, but I would love anything we could do to increase tree cover, you know? Tree cover and the water in our lakes is just, you know, degrading year by year. So anything we could do with that, I would like. I just, maybe it needs to be broke out, or maybe you need to add a performance indicator for those things.
And I agree, the objective didn't really meet the KPIs, but if you shorten the objective like that, it makes sense.
Yeah, shorten the objective, and it's like, and it's fine, yeah.
And then some of those other points might be able to be added into the growth management side of things, too.
Exactly.
The tree, tree canopy in new areas, and then if you guys come up with a program to add it, you know, in state streets or some of those areas.
Couldn't it be possible, like, you just take your park, let's take the lakefront, for example, and just go, we're going to add 10 trees on the lakefront every single year. It's hard to do a percentage, I don't know what the number is, but that way, every year, you know what, it's, it's happening, you're going to hit your number, and every park's going to be different, and when you hit a capacity that you don't want to put any more trees, those trees go to another park that's in need. It's just a lot, you know, especially in the lakefront, I think there's, three trees were planted, I walk it every day, it's because we had to remove a large tree. So if you said, okay, every year, we're going to do 10 trees, here's the layout of it, you get with your, your tree guy, Keith, I guess his name is, and then figure out where you're going to put those. At least we could see a canopy growing, and then when the old ones get dead, you already have a new canopy coming in. So it would be great to walk down there and not have the sun blast down to you 24/7, you know.
I've told you, I, I can't go outside. I'd burst into flames, so.
I, I agree with that.
I like the tree canopy. I don't know how that messes, we certainly don't want to go plant a pile of trees on the lakefront and then have to tear them out with the master plan and add a bunch of costs on the backside, but, you know, there is a gra, a big expanse of that sidewalk that you literally, I mean, are blistering by the time you get to the end, so it'd be great to have tree canopy.
Yeah, the tree canopy, I'm just, we planted, a couple of years ago, we planted 102 trees, cypress trees down there. It was a, we have to be very careful with the residents that live along there. Those trees were strategically placed to not block people's view, so when you start planting trees to create the canopy over that walkway, the, the residents get pretty, pretty vocal about that. So it's a, it's a balancing act of create canopy and also not block people's view.
Well, and to Dave's point, when, can I call you Dave in this meeting?
Sure.
To Dave's point in this meeting, like, the neighborhood I live in has beautiful, huge trees, I mean, gorgeous, 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 but they're dying, and like, no one planted any, any other ones. So now, it's like you had this gorgeous tree, you know, 100-foot-wide canopy, and then it has to come down, and then you're just like, I don't know, it's like, it's almost like we need to kind of have like a constant rotation, preparing for the ones to age out of the system.
So, yeah, we can, we can look at KPIs and come forward with more information.
Or do they, or do you want us to just revise the objective as, as Councilwoman Matheny suggested, and we just end it at community?
For this, I would just, I would just end the second half, strike the second half of the sentence, but if you wanted to add an objective about trees and that kind of stuff, I wouldn't be sad about it. We got three? One, two, three, four?
Well, yeah, just, it's like your, your indicators are in the statement itself, the objective. That's something you can certainly work on and fine-tune up, I think. Good. Any other? Moving on.
All right, so moving on, 3.2. Improve mobility and connectivity together with partner agencies to create a safe, walkable, and bikeable community. And our KPI on this would be the miles of trails per residence, and the benchmark established for a municipality of 50,000 to, up to just under 100,000 residents. By the National Recreation and Parks Association, that benchmark is 15 miles of trails for a municipality our size, so that's what we set our benchmark.
And currently, we have seven with more, seven miles of trail with more hopefully coming in the future.
Does this also include the issue of sidewalks? We have so many streets without sidewalks. They're walkable if you like to dodge traffic.
Yeah, I, I don't, this benchmark does not include sidewalks, these are strictly trails.
Okay, just trails. All right.
And I, so, it, it has walkable and bikeable, but, you know, in some of these, there's, there's multiple areas in the city that needs road widensings, and I don't know if we're going through doing complete streets with those, and just, is that a goal we can put in here, is complete streets for all new road widensings, whether it be county or state or city done?
Can you state that again?
That's, that's in our work plan.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's written somewhere that we were doing, was it, was it an objective or a goal in, in the infrastructure section?
Okay.
It's in yours?
It's in growth.
Referring to 2.1.
2.1, okay.
Walkable and connected neighborhoods is part of the objective. Where we highlight the walk score, sorry, KPI there, mostly deals with sidewalks.
Okay, so sidewalks under 2.1 and trails under 3.2?
Correct.
Is that where we're going at?
I think we, I, Mr. Surgeon, I think we had planned in the upcoming work plan to be adopting in the comp plan and the land development code. be adopting in the comp plan and the land development code standards for complete streets, which I think may be what Mr. Anderson was saying, it was part of his. It was part of our plan to adopt it, which then we would be able to start tracking it. Because I just don't think it's written in here.
It's in my work plan. It's in his work plan, I remember, because I didn't understand what it was, and I had Andre explain it to me, so.
And if you look at your packet, where, when I gave that presentation of what our city is currently working on this fiscal year, under growth management, you can see that the first item there is the complete streets master plan under, right?
So if you want to add a performance indicator, we could add that, you know, number of new streets installed that meet complete street standards, or something like that?
I think us getting it into the code to make sure new development has that is, that's the goal, right? And that's, if that's already in there, that's, that's fine. I do have a comment kind of on the same lines under 3.3, once you guys get to it. I just didn't know, is everyone good, I guess, with the trail? KPI?
Right.
So 3.3, improve quality of life by planning, maintaining, financing, and upgrading infrastructure, facilities, and outdoor spaces in alignment with the city's strategic initiatives and adopt levels of service standards to meet existing and future growth. KPIs being the pavement condition index, which indicates the general condition of payment, pavement from a scale of 0 to 100. The city strives to be in the minimum satisfactory level of 70. And the building maintenance completed work orders, this would be preventive and reactionary work orders to maintain and improve the conditions of city facilities, benchmark being set at 1,300.
So this is one of the, when I'm looking through all of the infrastructure goals, we're missing something here under water, wastewater, and storm for, whether it be resiliency or replacing pipes or lift stations or whatever, some sort of KPI. I know you guys have buckets budgeted every year for replacing X number of feet of mains or the lining projects, you guys have just something in here.
I'm so glad you asked. There, I have a book of performance benchmarks that I could use. A lot of them are used internally to see if, for example, number of breaks per mile of pipe, number of calls per customer, things like that, but we want to, we're going, we will be developing a strategic plan, and we're going to facilitate out kind of the best ones in that, in that process. But any input that you would want to provide, please-
I want you guys to provide. I don't want us to-
Right. So, so the type of ones that I believe we'll end up with are, like, a weighted average of, like, a water quality meeting the standard, also customer service satisfaction, and water loss. So that's non-revenue producing water. You know, you, all the water that's produced minus the losses from fires, the pipe breaks and so forth, and keeping that to a particular percentage.
Okay.
But we're really looking at some more global ones. So while I have, we have a bunch of them, we also are just quite not there yet as far as lifecycle asset management and having all of that, the data in and being able to put up dashboards, but that's the ultimate vision or goal.
Okay, and what's the timeline for kind of setting that? Is something, we'd look at next year or mid-year, or when would we add those to, yes?
So every time I think I can give you a date by which I can get something done, and let me believe, believe me, and if you take those tests, one of my five strengths, you know, strategic thinking, one of others over achiever, I always want to get it done by the deadline before. I mean, I could tell you six months. Our strategic plan, we would like to get that done in the first quarter, that's our plan, but with bidding out, I'm not using that as an excuse, but that will take time as we go through, and we've got to make sure we get our contracts in place and make sure the pipes get fixed and, and all the other stuff. But that's the plan. It might be next year, but I hope it's sooner than that.
Is it possible to put a placeholder or something in here? Because it, the way I would look at this is it's a, it's a complete miss on our part of, we've, we've got these issues and we're not even talking about it.
We, we will, we'll get, we'll put something together for you.
Right, to where, you know, if I'm having, like, some of the sewer issues in, in the grid, you know, that, it's, it's one issue for one resident, but that's the biggest issue they have with anything going on in the city. So I don't, I just, I just feel like we need to have something in there.
No, you're right, and when you have, but I hate to, you know, like, the number of SSOs per mile of pipe or, or lift station, we're in emergency recovery mode, so it's not going to be-
Well, and it's hard for engineers to, like, get to 90% and then put it down on paper.
Land the plane.
Yeah. Okay. And then, i- is there a way, when we talk about this, to have something of, you know, we've got a, a bunch of mobility and road impact fee funds, or park impact fee funds, or something of, just making sure it, we're implementing those funds? Is that something we would, we should put as a goal or a KPI? I'm just throwing that as an idea. I don't have an example or, or something. Because we have, I don't know, $10 or $12 million in the road impact fee, mobility fee fund, that, I want to make sure we're, we're starting to implement that.
I'm just going to point out, there's a future objective that doesn't have a KPI like that, but that might be a good place for it, which is manage public funds efficiently to provide infrastructure and public service needs.
All right, so 4.2?
4.2. And Wendy's saying something that I cannot hear.
She'll be up here in a minute.
She'll be up here in a minute.
Is there any more conversation about 3.3? All right, then we'll invite Wendy up and move on to financial sustainability. Objective 4.1, ensure flexibility to effectively respond to changing economic, social, environmental, and/or political conditions and circumstances. Proposed KPIs would be the price of government, revenues per capita, expenditures per capita, fund sustainability, grant application success rate, and grant compliance violations.
Yes.
I don't understand any of the benchmarks.
Great, so you live a very interesting life, I thought.
There we go.
Okay, so just going through the KPIs, I'll explain them. There is a municipal dashboard that I prepped, that is just too much information for that, so just, your price of government, I'll give you what it is and also reasons why it would be important to have as a KPI. So, and this is your, key indicators are based on the auditor's office of standard, GFOA standards, so you can get budget awards, revenue performance awards, and also recognition that the procedures are based on audit, investment, and everything that governs finance. So price of government, the measurement, is the sum of all taxes and fees that we collect as a city, and then have an aggregate based on personal income from the people of St. Cloud to measure that what we're charging people is sustaining the government that provides those services for them. Okay? The reason this indicate matters, it allows the local government, right, to monitor those levels of resources that we have available. The question never gets asked, should we have that program? Can we afford that program? Everybody always wants, but just because we want tap dance classes doesn't mean we make money off of them, and it's, it's actually bleeding us dry. So we want to make sure that we give the citizens the confidence that what we're putting out there, we can afford and sustain, and they can enjoy, and we can continue providing those services, and we're not gouging them in any way. Fair enough?
I want to point out, the tap dancing lessons have been canceled.
You obviously don't think we should send every one of our citizens $2,000 evidently, so.
That's right. Or maybe we should have a salsa class, I don't know.
Ms. Colazo?
Yes, ma'am.
Can, can you give me, like, a number example of that? Are you saying, like, the average citizen that lives in St. Cloud's income is $40,000, and so what, we're charging them shouldn't exceed 5% of $40,000?
Yes, ma'am, so if we do some math and say that, let's say, like, take fiscal year '21, our ad valorem taxes are projected, right now, we've already collected 86.5%, so it's $11,936. That's not included share revenues, charges for fees for parks, rec, planning, zoning. If you divide that by the average median on the census right now, that the average St. Cloudian is making $52,230, we are actually at 4.5% of their personal income, which means that we are sustainable at that point right now. We're at that delta of 5%, and we're not overcharging them for the services we're providing. And that's how we give you that number. So anything above an incremental increase of 5%, we just went too high somewhere. You know, we're providing something that's gouging our citizens a little bit too much. So I'm not going to say a percent, a point and a half is not going to be bad, but if we move higher, and we're at like 10 and 1/2% and one shot, one kill, we, we did something, we're charging for something, you know, and we need to see that. Maybe we got another program that we're funding that's just taking too much, that we are charging, the fees are too high. You know what I mean? It happens. You know, some of the things have already happened where we didn't expect revenues to come in so high, so we need to, it's a good thing, I mean, I like the money in, but we need to make sure that it's fair and equitable. So that's how we'd report it to you. Yes, ma'am, correct.
Okay.
Revenues per capital, capita is just total revenues of all, again, government funds, and then it's divided by population. So why that matters, too, is that we need to make sure, again, we're collecting revenues at a pace that is consistent with the growth of population in the city of St. Cloud. It should, there should be a measure and a delta with that. Okay? Expenditures, the inverse of that, too, is that we're making sure that our outflows are measured based on the amount of people that are entering and exiting the city, and the measure of expenditures would give us an idea as well, not including capital funding projects, or your 300 funds is divided by that population as well, to see that we're expending an outflow at a consistent rate with the population growth that we're saying. So what you're doing with this KPI is literally setting the standard to say the word growth, now we can measure it. Now we can say, we had a 5% increase in population, therefore we had a 7% increase of expenditures. Now you're really taking growth, and it's not a buzzword anymore, you're putting numbers and figures to it. Okay? Fund sustainability, I hope everybody does this with their checking account. This is just taking the money that we have and saying, can we survive if the apocalypse happens or something catastrophic happens, for the amount that we set our policy for with this, in this case, would be to sustain at least the two months or the 60 days that you'll later see in another KPI. We need to have constant cash flow, we can't just have things, we need to have liquid, and that's the test that this fund sustainability will do. It'll include all expenditures, incurring our debt, and this word, you've heard it as working capital, so that measures the amount of debt liabilities that we have in all the assets, and literally says, we can go to the bank right now and we can grab a loan out there to fund certain projects because we're profitable. Grant award rate, this is the net change in awards. So when you have a, a grant, normally and typically, a lot of the grants in the city have been three-year increments of award. Well, it's not new growth if it's a three-year award, because the next year, you still have the same grant, you didn't gain anything new, right? You just continued on, on the award period. So we want to report further and tell you, out of the 10 grants you had in fiscal year '20, you grew three additional grants. That's the benchmark right now, we're testing it, this is a benchmark year, and that's to tell you that we went to go hunt for grants to fund and provided other funding resources other than keeping the same money telling over and over again. If you look at the CAFR, you look at what we report financially, 5.5% of revenue has always been grants, and it hasn't deviated in the last 5.2 years, based on numbers and historical. That's not a bad thing, it just means that we need to make our grant writers or get some more, you know, feet out there to really go attack those, and you should see a gain. So we're going to measure it at three and see what, what this benchmark year does for us, see what we can go get as we realign this and, and draft that. Finally, grant compliance violations, we need to make sure that we are honest and transparent, that there's funding, we buy things with grant funding, and those have different rules based on the OMB circulars of the federal government, so we need to make sure that we're securing those assets, destroying or disposing of those assets accurately, and we don't have anything that comes out. When we get expenditures that exceed $750,000, we'll get a CFA audit, which will review all that, and how we do cost allocations and all that items. So we want to make sure that we report to you if there's any compliance issues with grant funding, because if we don't do it right, we could be in a situation where we couldn't get some grant funding if needed to. So it's just a security blanket to let you know that we shouldn't have anything.
Yes. Joe?
Ms. Colazo, when you were doing the grant award, you kept saying three, but the line says grant application success rate 50%. On mine, anyway. I don't have 50%. Do I have the wrong printout?
Nope.
I think that, that's more of a procurement grant program. It's to strive to have 50% of the grants that the city applies for be successful. That's what that means.
I'm sorry, that wasn't a, a measure I put in there. We could, if you want to, I mean, a grant application, as Mr. Abizmal just clarified, would be if we go up for 13 grants in a year, how many? If you'd like to know that, sure, we can do that, I'm just, I didn't put that there. If you'd like it, I can add it.
It doesn't matter to me, I just wasn't following the three.
And when these are on the website, is there a different explanation? Because looking at this, I had no clue without the explanation.
We will, in OpenGA, we have the ability to tell our story, so yes, we will have description for each report.
Yeah.
Because I think it's, the explanation makes sense, it's just, you gotta have someone from not the finance department read these and go, "Okay, I get it."
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We will have Wendy type down the description.
Yes, in the KPIs, originally, there's a measurement, and it out, it summarizes for you really quick. The only thing that we didn't put, just because of that juncture, we thought it was too much information, is the actual formulas. You know, just, hey, this is this plus this minus this equals that, so if you wanted to do it, you could do it, too, so.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, this is all we saw, so I don't know.
And Councilmember Matheny, if you would like it in there, I'll, I'll add it, just, I'm sorry, I didn't add that one, so maybe that's why I wasn't making sense. Okay.
Okay, any more questions? We can move on to 4.2.
Yes.
All right. Manage public funds efficiently to provide infrastructure and public service needs. Wendy, I'll let you address those KPIs as well.
All right, so 4.2 is efficiency. This is a, a target rate of a department level and city level. We need to strive to use the least amount of resources to provide a given level for capital projects. It's not always an answer of, we go broker and finance. We should be able to have, once EBITDA is done and everything of that nature, have, again, positive cash flow in order to fund some of those projects that, you know, are necessary and relevant. So this would manage public funds or give you KPIs in which the debt service load, as you know, we have a certain capacity as to how much we can take tax, and revenues and income from tax or to bond out, and we need to keep it at a certain threshold. So if we have a $10 million project, and we go out there and just get a loan, bond it or something, we, we have a certain capacity. Our current debt service load right now puts us at that rating of an A, which is a medium, upper-level medium in Moody's, which is an A in the S&amp;P, and the more debt we grab, the potential that our credit, you know, vulnerability will go down. So we always keep a measure, never hit the top of the realm. Right now, we're nowhere near it, as we've paid over $10 million in the last 10 years of debt service. We had a heavy year, and you, you guys were probably here, obviously, before I was, in 2016, we're heavy- We're heavy years now. We're looking forward that those debt and principal payments have been and interest payments have been getting to the point where we've paid them off. So that would be your debt service load. That's how we would measure it. 10% increments of debt service load is the industry standard. We've tested that, and we haven't hit that in the last five years of historical trend right now. But a large infrastructure project or something coming up will move us up there, but we want to be transparent and give you 10% as a benchmark and give you the reality of what happens if we have major capital infrastructure needs right now, which is coming.
Question?
I like this a lot, too. Is this something that if we did have a big project come on an agenda item, would we be notified like, hey, this project is going to, you know, we're going to exceed the debt service load that we have as a performance indicator? Would that be something you guys will track in like agendas? That would be great.
It should, yes. That's exactly the idea.
Just so we could tie things together like, hey, by the way, I mean, we can do it, but you're going to exceed this benchmark. Okay, perfect.
Safety mark.
Sorry.
And can you, so can you explain the debt service load? Is that a reduction, or is that just making sure we don't exceed 10%?
That makes sure that we don't exceed 10% at each interval. And just so you know, when we, you do get capital projects on the back end, we already do this, which is the principal plus the interest divided by the revenues. That's what gets you the debt service load.
Okay. And then do you guys separate it out in general fund, or like some of the transportation or sales tax revenue versus enterprise fund?
Yes, sir. Every fund is separate on the debt load that they can do. Yes, sir. The next one was the enterprise fund recovery. This is going to take our, the enterprise funds, how fast they're able to recover costs, considering all operating and as you've heard before, non-operating revenue. Why it matters is a measure of 100% or greater indicates that this fund as a whole is successful recovering their full costs through charges and services and retaining that revenue. So what we outflow, we're getting back through services and sales, and it should be at 100%, meaning that they are recovering at an adequate cadence for everything we've expended out. And that's how we measure the enterprise funds. It's a good measure for you on cost recovery.
Now, wouldn't it be over 100% because some of that money flows back into the general fund?
No, because the way that it flows into the general fund is through an administrative allocation and transfer, so that's not, it's not going to, well.
Not the admin cost, but the profit made through the enterprise funds gets transferred back to the general fund, right? So it's, we actually recover more than 100%?
We do recover more than 100% correct as we transfer it to the general fund, yes. So we could put, I mean, 100% would be the correct cost recovery number now. I mean, we could do a delta between the general fund, you know, the transfer to that from the enterprise fund, and give you a different delta for that if you'd like, you know, calculating that in. I mean, that's going to give us net position. So we could do that for you.
I don't know if that's what the goal should be, is to always.
I'm open if you want me to kind of give you those numbers and do that additional math for you and segregate it out like that, we could easily do it. It's just a quick calc.
At least the enterprise funds themselves, right? Because that's different than some of the other services we provide.
Yes, sir. We won't, go ahead, sir. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the impact, so I was trying to find somewhere to put the city implementing the impact fee funds in a cost-effective way, or making sure that it gets implemented and projects get built.
Well, we treat the impact fee funds just like any other fund, because they are that. We've specifically segregated them for that reason, to be able to look at them, which is the 470, the 480, and now your storm water or refugee sanitation 490 fund. So the same, where the KPI measures those would be, you could get the same reports that you do for the general fund for the impact fees on sustainability through the PNL of that. What we're bringing in to what we're taking out, and you get that report through that KPI between budget and actual reports.
So where's that in here?
In the, in the KPI of. Well, one, it would be managing expenditures to deal with cost containment. That's covering objectives 41, 42, and 43 in this one. That would include impact funds. I mean, I could make the annotation, if you'd like, that this applies to all funds. I just thought that that was inherent. We would do governmental, enterprise, and then internal funds. Every fund would get this same KPI, not just, you wouldn't only get general, but I can outline that further if you'd like.
Okay.
Was there a specific concern or information you're looking for, so I can make sure that I give you?
I just want to make sure, because we get the comments of you guys collect these impact fee funds, but they don't go anywhere. I just want to make sure that we are tracking and putting them somewhere. Putting them into projects and implementing it.
Yes, sir. And it has to be aligned to the master plan. You know, we can't just, we don't just award them and say, hey, you know, like, for example, you mentioned the mobility funds. We just don't go out there and say, hey, we got $16 million, go. It has to strategically align to the objectives, to the master plan, to the overall comprehensive plan that the city has done, you know, to ensure that we can defend why we use those at any time.
So where's the goal saying that?
Well, if I'm, from my perspective, am I ensuring the long-term financial planning that I'm supposed to develop, which is in this fiscal year? I would outline that in the long-term financial plan. I mean, you know, currently, right now, the estimated completion date is May 2021 for that. We're like, you know, I'm like.
Oh, for the capital plan?
For the, capital plan is actually occurring in March, and we'll have a consultant come on right now and develop the whole thing that we have already prepped, and he'll run it and test it for us to make sure we're being clear. And then in conjunction with that, the long-term financial planning will be May, which is a 10-year objective, long-term financial planning in correlation with the comprehensive plan, the master plan, all these plans. We should align to that to be able to fund what is projected right now is a $30 million deficit for project, capital projects in the next 10 years. We have those numbers for you as well.
Perfect.
Moving on?
Okay, moving on to 4.3. Enhance financial performance and public confidence through transparency, accountability, and consistency.
All right. Fund balance efficiency. This is an indicator that shows the number of days a fund can operate based solely on its ending fund balance. Based on the state auditor, the GFOA, it's a good indicator that I can tell you that we can survive 60 days without getting no money in, no charges for services, no taxes. We should be able to fund for 60 days is a good benchmark. In case the wheels fall off for a minute, we have enough, 60 days is a standard, industry standard, to get back in tune and have money to do our necessary expenditures and recover. Fortunately, we're not at like Disney World standards where they can suffice two years without any contact to the outside world. So 60 days is our standard. And that is going to take ending fund balance plus our expenditures, our debt service, and then manage and add any transfers divided by 365 days in a year, and we should survive 60 days. That is, to make sure I'm being honest with you, that is the same with your policy of 16.5% of fund balance available that we're going to move the policy up to from the 12.5. You need, in the general fund, $6 million for two months of operating. So we exceed that quite quite a bit right now with 18.2 million currently in reserves. So you'll be able to measure that. Could we survive if something happens and the apocalypse is here, 60 days to get back on our feet with no money in? That's our benchmark for you.
Or even, yeah, the FEMA cost recoveries, and if something happens, it just takes forever to get that money back.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And what is our benchmark? So it's, it sounds like you're saying we way exceed 60 days.
Yes, ma'am, we do right now.
So why are we setting our benchmark so low then?
It's not that we're setting it so low, we're setting it realistic. For remember that this, 2022 is actually going to be a budget benchmark year for you because we had COVID. However, we didn't really have the impact of other things. If we would have had a hurricane that touched down, I can't really tell you that we could be sufficient. We really had huge catastrophic damage. So this is setting your benchmark for catastrophic damage, including pandemics and things like that. So '22 will be this benchmark. This is not conservative, but more realistic that in 60 days it is operationally feasible. It'll take us 60 days to get back on our feet. City Hall doesn't exist anymore. We can't get to the financial system. The zombies got us. Money doesn't exist in 60 days to get back on our feet. So it's conservative? You want me to heighten it up? I would just recommend to see if we can hit 60 days. If we exceed it by too much, my promise to you is that we will narrow that delta if it's too much. If we have too much, then we can change that benchmark if you don't like it. I'm open what days you want to, want me to put it. I mean, it's up to you.
Well, I thought we were stretching on these goals, and it sounds like we've got, like, the unfunded pension liability of, I know you haven't gotten there yet, 2%. What are we now?
Unfunded pension liability, there's two explanations. The 2% is across the entire board, but in police and fire from the previous presentation, we are 10% unfunded.
Yeah.
But, so I wanted to have these indicators have some meaning for you, because if I set it at 10% and we hit it, you wouldn't probably pay attention to it. But if I set what industry standard says to do, and then we don't, like, when you see 10% comparative to a 2%, I would expect the question you just asked to come up, and you should say, Wendy, what's going on? And then I can answer that. So I just try to set the standard a little higher, so I, you know, you can ask me the hard questions and, but like I said, if you want me to move it up, I can. I just thought that that was like a very good benchmark to start questions and, you know, keep me honest, I guess.
I'm just trying to.
Yes, ma'am.
Understand what would be the advantage of changing it to 90 days. I know it's like you're already there with what you have.
Yes, sir. And Ms. Miller just reminded me too, just to make mention that these benchmarks, I base them also with the GFOA's recommendation. Like, your 16.5% on change in net position, your fund balance, is the GFOA recommendation, industry standard between the 400 and 10 municipalities here in Florida. Just so you know where I got the benchmark, so.
Okay.
Your call.
I'll be okay with words at. Any other?
Overruled.
Okay. We'll keep that words at.
I'll keep 90 for you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Mayor?
Yes?
Before we move on to public service, suggest a break. We have some bento boxes back there to pick up to eat, light snacks before we continue on.
Would you guys like to take a break?
I've been wanting to say bento box all day.
Sure.
All right.
Now I'm expecting like sushi.
No. Well, kind of. Thank you, sir.
All right, let's go ahead and take a break then. Thank you, guys.
Most objective 5.1. Incorporate industry best practices and innovative technologies to effectively deliver the highest levels of service. And our key performance indicator for this is the building permits average review days. The benchmark is proposed at 14 days, which would be the goal for our time to review building permits for this, within the city.
Is there any kind of a current average on how long it takes to review? And I know that's a big question, depending on how big the plans are and how big the project is. You know, I had someone complaining to me last week. They've been, I know this is not normal times, you know, they've been waiting for over two months for something to come back from the county. Thank God it wasn't the city they're.
Our typical, our typical turnaround time for residents is five days or less. For commercial, we try to get the building review done two weeks, depending upon the size of the project.
Right. Well, that's, that's a great standard if you can, you can meet that one. Any questions? I'm surprised our engineers don't have any questions now. You're not waving your hand. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to 5.2. Incorporate proven and innovative processes, resources, and technology to enhance effectiveness, efficiency, and consistency. KPI being the percentage of 911 calls answered within 10 seconds. The goal is to answer 90% of those calls within 10 seconds. Questions or comments?
I mean, I think it's a comment we're going to have on every one of them. What is it now?
Yeah.
And is that, I mean, or can we meet that goal?
Do we have that benchmark of Bismill?
I've never heard any, have y'all heard any complaints about 911 calls not being answered?
That's 1221.
I mean, we're, we're very blessed.
I just want to make sure the, they're reasonable and.
Good evening. Pete Gollum, Chief of Police. There is standards, and one of the things that we have, if you remember, with our triple accreditation for our comm center, we maintain a 94% efficiency average on all calls for service. This is a high bar, but we can easily maintain it, and that's one of the goals in our quality control efforts within the comm center to do that. There's not a industry average per se, but answering those calls in a prompt manner saves lives, and that's where we want to turn and keep that bar maintained. I'm confident we can do that without any difficulty whatsoever.
Awesome.
Are there any particular times that, you know, calls are more, you know, like at night, at, you know, 1:00 in the morning? Is there holidays? I'm just curious.
I would say all of the above, but in reality, kind of our power shift, we would say. Our extraordinary number of calls for service are increased from 12:00 in the afternoon till about 10:00 at night, and then it starts to drop off at that time. But clearly, the five to eight o'clock bewitching hours with a lot of calls for service throughout the day tend to be our peak times, and that's where we have to maintain and watch the number of operators and call takers that we do have.
Any other question?
So that's a dispatch and comm goal. Is there a police goal or, you know, crime statistic or a percent on call or something?
If we started to get into crime statistic goals, now we're kind of dabbling into, from a police chief's plan, it's a difficult process, because to say that we're going to eliminate crime, we've been able, we've been fortunate. Out of the last 10 years, eight of those years, we've reduced crime each and every year. To establish a goal for reduction of crime is going to be difficult, because what happens is our calls for service continue to grow as a result of the city growing. So our ability to push crime down is limited because of the sheer volume of new people coming in. So our goal is to maintain it at a flat level. I really didn't want to get into a statistical ability to try to capture that piece of it because of the subjectivity of the growth management of the city and us trying to maintain that management side of it. In our work areas, we looked at some of the accomplishments that we wanted to accomplish in our work business plan, and that's facility-driven, it's accreditation-driven. It's, one of the things that's in there is we have the ability going forward, and one of the proposed budget concepts is we can actually dispatch remotely. It's amazing. We're doing a lot of things. So if we have another COVID outbreak that we have a problem with, we literally can give specialized laptops to dispatchers, and they can answer calls for service and process calls from their homes if necessary.
Interesting.
And those type of things. But I, we didn't want to get into putting too much statistical analysis and looking at goals for that, because being a reactionary function the way we are, it's a difficult process, so we kept it more on the business plan than on the actual measurement plan.
Okay, makes, but it's somewhere. It's on your.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, 5.3. Enhance customers' access to city government operations and public meetings to reach a broader audience. KPIs being the average city social media page interactions per month. Benchmark is set at 150,000, and percentage of public records requests satisfied within three days of request, benchmark set at 80%. And I believe right now, Bismill, we're approximately 100,000 or so page interactions on our social media. That has been growing, and we are looking to continue to grow that. So that's why we set that benchmark there.
Do we put in their positive social media?
Don't make my job harder.
It'd be nice if we could pass an ordinance for that, wouldn't it? Thou shalt be positive.
Every negative comment, you have to work a day at City Hall. Every negative comment, you have to work a day at City Hall.
Yeah.
In my office. Any questions?
Further comments, questions there? All right, we will move ahead to 5.4, enhance public health and safety by establishing coordinated departmental levels of service to guide operational and financial planning. First KPI being fire suppression, average response time by station, 7 minutes and 20 seconds. And the EMS average response time by station, 6 minutes.
Where are we at?
That's pretty close to where we're at.
Good afternoon again, Jason Miller, Fire Chief. Currently, we're hovering right around 8 minutes on a system-wide global look at the city. It is for both Fire and EMS. Obviously, different response zones have slightly different times as those peak activities. You know, the west side of the city, from Budinger West and from Lake Shore down to Nolte, is actually our hottest spot in the city when it comes to our call volume and saturation. Ironically, a lot of the 7 minute 20 time that we're benchmarking off of has to do with the comm center, and they do a great job there. The other part is, is obviously getting out the door and then driving to the call. The part that we have the most impact for in the Fire Department, obviously, is that time of, from when we're notified from the comm center to getting out the door. We can only do so much about traffic. You know, once you start running into traffic problems, then it comes into, you know, you look at your station locations, which happily ours are greatly located, which you'll find eventually in the matrix report. They did a full analysis of our stations, where we can cover and the drive time allotted, which is 5 minutes, to provide services to our customers. As those times start to escalate based off of response time, drive time, we will need to look at doing additional stations based off of call volume and response time.
And I would like to add to that, that those benchmarking numbers, they were adopted in the fire element, the comprehensive fire element that the city adopted, so those were those numbers come from.
Correct. Those are NFPA guidelines, standard response times. So, we have two different metrics that we could follow, one being NFPA itself, which is a 90 percentile mark. The city adopted a slightly less aggressive rate at 75%. Currently, we're not quite there at 75% because of, we have multiple problems that are affecting that. One being the overlap in call volume and individual response districts, and the other, the, just the global response time of drive time. The only way to reduce that, to get that down into the more acceptable range, would be to build additional fire stations.
I understand. I'm curious, has there been any comparison to our city's response times to Kissimmee's as well as from the counties?
So, Kissimmee County is really not a comparable. They use a completely different standard. As you know, you know, we're more urban, we're more tightly densely populated. The county's response time is vastly different, because they have areas such as Keenonsville. Although there's not a lot of call volume down there necessarily, it could take a long time to get to a call down there, which would affect, on a global scale, a lot of other calls. A perfect example is the fire station in Keenonsville covers all the way down Highway 60 to the Kissimmee River Bridge. Now, I don't know if you've ever driven that, but that's a good 25-minute, 30-minute drive.
Yep.
It's all about managing the risk profile, if you will, of how often do we get calls down there? Do we need to build a station down there? Can we justify it? Which, that part is always the struggle. As it pertains to Kissimmee, on a basis of globally just looking at things, their response times are slightly better than ours on average, and have been in the past, from some of the analytics we've done. Keep in mind, Kissimmee is a little bit bigger geographically, but they also have four fire stations, and they're looking at building a fifth currently. Their population, I believe, is hovering around 80,000, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
By now, we're probably 55,000, 57,000, plus the areas of the county that we cover through. A joint response area increases that even more. So realistically, just based off of population and landmass, we should probably be looking to be about the same size.
Excellent. You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
All right, we will move now to professional workforce. Yes. And I think Mimi has a suggestion on rewording of that goal that we had discussed earlier, so I'm gonna let her lead with that, and then we'll talk about our KPIs.
Good evening, Council. Director of HR, Mimi Tran. The proposed professional workforce goal prior was build a values-based organization dedicated to developing and retaining qualified talent who provide exceptional services to the community. And I just kinda moved everything around a little bit, and wanted to see if this is something the council would agree upon. Develop and retain qualified talent based on the city's core values to provide exceptional services to the community.
Much better.
Yeah, I like that.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay, so, we will revise that goal. And we're moving now to our proposed objectives under professional workforce. 6.1, engage businesses and industries to build relationships for immediate and future workforce needs. KPIs being the number of interns employed. We would aim to hire five interns per year. And also, the city would aim to maintain relationships with at least three outside organizations to supply talent for the city. This would be universities, career placement, vocational programs, things of that nature.
How does, how is that working now as far as using interns? I mean, does anyone have a description on how that's working now? How that's being done, just, just for education's sake?
Now, Sam, you wanna talk about your, the internship program you have with Fleet?
I'm sorry, interrupt your meal.
I can just share briefly that we, we currently don't have a formal internship program. We recently just started working with Osceola Tech, and we've been partnering with them. We've had some challenges where they would say, oh, we have two interns available, but then they'd do the process, and then they would back out. And we'd have to wait a little longer for more interns to be interested, so we're, it's in progress. That seems nodding.
Yeah, I just, I think that's just a, an era of great opportunity for tapping into the next generation of young people, especially those that are working in school. I think there's even possibility of things that we could certainly work on, to tap in even to high school students, et cetera. Just, I think they're great relationship builders, as well as talent builders. And so, I, I think having a, that is a goal, so. It's just, it's just a great goal to have, and a great thing to put into place. Any other?
Does this also include, like, the transition house? Because I know the city manager and myself met with the new director of the transition house, and we talked about opportunities to be able to partner with, with them, you know, as appropriate in the, in the city. So, is this something we're working on too with them?
We, we do receive some applications, and, and I know the mayor's really good about sending applicants over from that organization as well. And it's really just based on the department and if the needs fit for the city. But we, we do try to interview and make sure they, they meet with the hiring manager.
Well, I think some of the stuff too with the transition house was opportunities, like, with events, like, after events to come, help clean up, help, you know, break down the bleachers and do all that stuff. That, that was kinda what we were talking about. Not maybe, like, you were talking about HR interviews and that kinda stuff, but maybe more.
Some more volunteer events?
But maybe more opportunity, just keeping that in the back of your mind, like, there's opportunities we could partner with them as well.
I don't know if community service fits into this.
I don't think it's community service. They're paid.
Fits into this category, but I think it does give you an opportunity to provide a
Yeah.
Another opportunity for people. You get to know them and their attitude, and some of them might end up being a potential employee or finding a career that you pursue.
Yeah, the stuff we were talking about was not community service.
Yeah, I understand. Any other input? Next?
All right, moving ahead to 6.2, improve employee development by incorporating organizational values and providing opportunities for professional growth. KPIs would be the number of training programs for employees available with a minimum of two. And the city aims for 70% of employees satisfied with their training based on city surveys.
What kind of training? Are we talking about technical training?
So, we currently, for this current fiscal year, we have one leadership program that's in place where our leadership team will be attending every other, right now, it's every other month, a leadership training session. So, the, I'm sorry, the number for the benchmarking might be misleading, because we're just saying two, but it's actually relating to actual training programs. We'd like to focus for this particular upcoming fiscal year on compliance and safety. So, some examples would be active shooter training, Smith Safe Driving Training. These are some trainings that would help reduce our insurance premiums. And in addition to the compliance training would be things related to HR, such as supervisor training that would help them understand better, like, on the FMLA disciplinary actions and things like that.
Does this training also incorporate training for improving people's skills? To me, I think the biggest complaints that, you know, we often get is, you know, an irate customer comes in and, you know, they feel like, you know, it's a tough thing dealing with the public sometimes. And I think one of the trainings that, you know, all of the departments need, especially those that are interacting with the citizens, is how to deal with, with people. You know, it's one thing to know your job and to have the technical training and skills that you need, but it's another thing to have people's skills. And so many complaints and things that we have are, are just knowing how to deal with people, how to handle conflict resolution, how to deal with people that are irate, that, but yet not, you know, not losing their cool. I just think one of the training things that certainly ought to be a priority with, with our city that just improves our image all the way around is training our, all of our staff to, you know, how to have sharp people's skills when it comes to working, you know, with the public, because that's, that's one of your big challenges. Not just knowing the job, but, you know, how to deal with us guys when we walk in. I'm applying for a permit for the very first time, and I've never done that before, and I don't know what all the rules are, and I get irritated because I, you know, I feel like, you know, you aren't giving me all the details, you're not telling me what I wanna hear, and then you get irritated back. And then I walk out, feel like I've had a bad experience. And, and again, I just, you know what I'm talking about.
I do, and I just wanna, you know, share that, you know, when I became city manager, that's one of my, I said that at the beginning. Number one thing we should do is always customer service, so, and we'd had those complaints I'd heard about that had gone on for years with the building department. We actually sent a lot of our permit texts and people like that to the Disney Institute. They're the best in the world at customer service. Because of COVID, we haven't been able to do that the last 12 months, but that's a program. And as long with soft skills also, we'll be working on all that stuff. But I'd like to get us re-engaged, especially the people that forward face the public. I'm telling you, Disney, they, they teach how to diffuse things very quickly, and you're not upset, they're not upset. That's, as my assistant, that's where she came from. She knows. I've seen her diffuse people in seconds.
Yeah, I was at a Disney hotel just recently, for a little vacation downtime, and, I mean, you were just treated royally by everybody. I mean, everyone, just, you know.
That's what I want people to feel like.
Made you wanna be there, and I'm just saying, boy, you know, if we could do that at the city.
That's exactly what I, that's my vision, to have that level of customer service.
And it helps us out a whole lot, council members. So, anyway, that's, I just think in training, you know, training people with people's skills.
And is this number misleading? Is it citywide programs? So, there's like two citywide programs for every employee? That's what this number is, right?
Yes.
There's other programs in each department for certain other skills, right?
Yes, and each department is so unique in their training needs, so we didn't really include that. But just to share with council, the HR team's goal, we're thinking more like five years down the line. Strategically, we'd like to have a St. Cloud University for the employees, and we'd like to absolutely add the organizational values as part of that training, which would also include providing exceptional service. So, anything that we do, we want to be able to add those organizational values into the training.
Maybe we wanna add citywide training programs, because I was confused with that too.
Right.
Two per employee? I didn't know what that meant.
We ought to have a training, a training program for all the public, and, you know, ought to have a good attitude. Anything else?
All right, last but not least, 6.3 is attract and retain a qualified and diverse workforce. Performance indicator would be the city having two diversity trainings per fiscal year, and striving to hire and retain employees as turnover rate would be targeted at below 12%.
What's our turnover rate?
Yeah, that's, what's the current turnover rate? Anybody know?
So, in 2020, the turnover rate was 13%. 2018, it was 17%, and then 2019, it was 14%. So, no COVID had the effect on our numbers last year. But the average national, I would say, is about between 15 to 16%. So, we're, we're aiming high at 12%, but we feel it'd be achievable as we roll out some of the programs for staff and make it more attractive for them to stay.
Any comments? That's a big one.
Yeah, and the, the turnover rate, I know you guys do an exit survey. Do we rate that at all, or? Well, if somebody's really mad, they're gonna give you a horrible review, but, does everybody get an exit?
We just start, so prior to, when I started, it was more of a paper version, and now we're doing in-person exit interviews, just that we have a better understanding of why the person's leaving and what we can do better.
Okay. I mean, you can learn a lot when a person is walking out the door, so.
Is this, is the turnover rate just based on people who are, is it everybody who leaves the city? Like, they're retiring, they were asked to leave, they were, you know, they were fired, or is this like people who voluntarily left? I guess I'm just wondering.
It's, it's an average number of just everyone that's left the city.
Right.
Because it'd be curious to see, like, you know, well, 30 people left, but 15 of them retired, and, you know, versus, you know, five of them were let go, and.
Yeah, that, I, I would like to see a number like that, more of like, who left and who's
Why?
Had an enjoyable time and retired, you know, that sort of thing.
Yeah, we can definitely move forward with trying to track that in the system, but our database currently only has active and inactive. So, the reason for termination, we'll have to build something so that we can track that better. So, we definitely can move forward in the future to share that in Open Gov.
Yeah, like even 12%, if 2% left because they did not find it enjoyable working here, or 10%, that's a big number difference, so.
And then there's, there's one thing I think missing from this section that I'd like to see added is something about employee safety, of having some sort of KPI in, somewhere in here about employee safety and lost time injuries and.
Could we use our mod rate? I mean, we can demonstrate that.
Yeah, however you guys see fit. I just wanna see, I always like to see something about employee safety in here.
That's a great idea, but I'm just saying, we had the mod rate that kinda gives the overall picture. And then, okay, let me think about that.
And then the only department I saw missing from all this is nothing about IT. I don't know if there's a goal or something. I'm sure they have, they have their work plan. I just didn't see any IT-related goals in here. I don't want you to feel left out. If you're fine with that, I'm fine with that, but I just, I just wanted to. I mean, technology is such a big part of everything moving forward that.
And a big part of the future in.
Good evening. G Chow, IT Director for a city of St. Cloud. We do have some goals, and it matches with the objectives and the, uh, let's see, projects that we are. We do have some goals and it matches with the objectives and the, let's see, projects that we are, you know, planning to meet as it relates to the city's objectives, right? So some of them are to provide better service, obviously, to provide twenty-four seven, three sixty-five type of help desk or help service desk and be more responsive. And also making sure that we have the proper technology to match the needs of this, business needs of the city. And then also looking at the infrastructure and see how we can improve and also make it more secure as it relates to, you know, cybersecurity and also the needs of the, whatever newer technology that comes in.
Perfect, yeah, I just, I just didn't see a goal in here as we were talking, so I just wanted to make sure that you guys were represented.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
I think that was just kind of a wrap-up comment, I think this was great. Just the, the way we flowed through this, the way it's organized now, I like, I really like it.
Well, to me, what's eye-opening about it is, is how, how much responsibility and how great and big the challenges that the city has. I don't, I think most of our residents don't have a, a good understanding of just how challenging it is to meet all of the responsibilities and, and goals and jobs and expectations that a city has. I think a lot of people have this concept, you know, St. Cloud's still this little bitty small town, we're just, you know, we're still this little small, we're not a little small city anymore. And, you know, and just looking at this, just with a little bit, you know, the time I've read over it and looked over it, it's like, you know, my mouth's on a fire hydrant, but it just makes me realize that, you know, even myself, wow, there is so much going on. And you guys have so much responsibility and sure makes me want to pray for you a whole lot more. And I'm very thankful to you for all that you do and this has certainly been enlightening.
And just the amount of, you can tell the amount of time and effort that went into putting all this together.
And we've just run through it in just a few hours here of stuff, I know it took weeks and weeks just to put together and now you got to maintain, now you continue to maintain, it's a huge job. Anything else?
If, Mayor, if I could, I just want to thank the team that put this together and that's Deputy City Manager Veronica Miller, Bismal Brew, like I said, she was the champion, he did the yeoman's work, but the entire team and, I can tell you, there was some bloodshed in some of the meetings and then we went back and forth to each other. But that's what we're supposed to do and I think we put a good product. Here's the thing I really like about it, we can improve it. We, we looked at KPIs, we didn't really put too many because we wanted to see how's it going to work. And as we moved through this, next year we'll probably add it some to demonstrate, are we being effective and are we being good stewards of, with our citizens' money? That's my goal and are we providing outstanding customer service? I think that's pretty much the overarching reasons why we do this. Again, I want to reemphasize, we're trying to be very proactive. We were trying to put us into a mindset that we're, we have assets, we know what they are, we know when any things need to be replaced and we can budget for them three years in advance. And that, I learned a long time ago, if you do that, you don't have to go buy a, you know, three hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment that you could have repaired twice and saved that three hundred thousand dollar or extended the life of it. So that's the mindset we're trying to get in.
Well, what I like about it, it gives you measurables, I mean, it's, you're not just shooting in the dark and with a shotgun effect and hoping you hit the target. I mean, you've got real definite targets here that you, you zeroed in on, so that's, that's good leadership. Thank you for, all of you for your leadership.
Mayor, if I may question, we heard your feedback this evening, I think we had some immediate changes that, that were easy. Sometimes you gave us, you know, direction, you'd like to, like us to find a KPI for a specific area. Do we have direction that we can continue to move forward with what we have and then we'll look for those KPIs for the next update or, or do we need to bring something back to you?
I, I think we certainly want you to maybe give us a printed update, I don't think we have to have another workshop, just give us a printed update of the changes that we asked for would be my recommendation, y'all feel different?
Yeah, that's good. And are you guys just updating this, is it quarterly, you guys will kind of review this internally or annually, I don't know how?
The open gov website will be updated quarterly with the updated information from the departments, so, and then we'll have our annual meeting.
Is that what, is that what you need?
I think so, yes, thank you.
Thank you guys, awesome.
Thank you, Mayor, the next thing I'd like to discuss is the legislative priorities for 2021. Again, last year I took a more active role in the lobbying process. This year did the same thing, I reached out to our lobbyists, both from Olay and also with Chris Carmody and got kind of a flavor, they still don't know everything that's going to go on. You know that they're on lockdown, the Senate, you can't even get in the Senate building without special permission of the Senate President. The Representative, House, the Representatives is still open. But last year, you know, if you recall, Mr. Askew and I went to Tallahassee, we spent two days there, we visited fourteen elected officials and were successful at appropriations for three items. Mutter Road, the seaplane base and Chisholm Park dredging. As you know, the COVID issue came in March and two of those programs were cut. So I'm proud to tell you, we did get the three hundred thousand dollar grant, the dredging, dredging at Chisholm Park, which has been completed. Previously to that, we did receive a three hundred thousand dollar allocation from the state legislature for the downtown phase two. So many people ask me where we're at on that, we're at a hundred percent plans, I will get those to you in the next couple of days. But when we take state money, FDOT gets involved, we had sixty-nine comments from the FDOT for our project. We've worked through those and we'll be able to proceed here in the next several months with the Vid process. So I'm envisioning that timeline being about the same thing as last time, we'll start construction April, May-ish and probably go through the end of the year. It's a bigger project than phase one, but so that's the legislative success we had. This year, you know, what we've been told, Mayor and I went to the delegation meeting, you know, was pretty much told behind the scenes, don't ask for anything and it's more policy-driven. And again, I listened to the Speaker of the House do his initial speech and home rule, they're coming after home rule again, any, any way they can, they're going to try to get their foot in the door. As a professional administrator, I object to that, I think the best decisions are made at the local level, so anything we can do to prevent that. But with that, I put together a list and Mayor Blackwell helped me with this, it's because we're getting ready for the delegation meeting, talked to several of you, getting your ideas, but I need some more ideas that we can take to our legislative lobbying team and work with this year.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we get started, sorry, I was writing something and I might have missed, you might have said it, I was writing something down. Whose list is this, is this the list we're asking Olay to do, is this the list for state or federal, like whose list is this, is this everybody's list?
This is everybody's list and then.
Are we going to pick like what we're going to ask Olay to do versus our state and federal out of the list?
Yes.
Okay. I have a couple items, I don't know if you want me to just go ahead.
Sure, jump on them, yeah.
Can y'all hear me? So, obviously, one of the recent issues that we've had is the food trucks and clarifying the legislation that's come from the state. So I know that Representative Hawkins said that he was going to try to get some clarification, but I don't know if that's something since we're, I've been told to, like, I've been, you know, talking to different people and they're like, don't ask for any money, don't ask for any money, but, you know, I was thinking maybe that was, it's not on the list, I know this list is a little bit older. So the food trucks, one thing I would like to see us do is protect any money that currently is used to maintain the vegetation within East Lake to Hopkla Laga. You know, just see if we can protect that money so that we can keep whatever we're getting on that lake. I know that I've heard from multiple people that being upset about what was done in the East Lake drawdown, that they didn't feel like it was enough and there's still vegetation and, you know, things like that. So it's definitely something I'd like to see if we could protect those dollars and so they're not stricken. The other idea I had is kind of a new one, but we have within, we have City of St. Cloud property that abuts Lake Runamide. So I don't know if you, you know, have a time, take a look at Lake Runamide, it's almost turning into a marsh. You know, Fish and Wildlife is basically throwing their hands up, they're not doing anything more on that lake and it's just becoming, it's like slowly not becoming a lake anymore. It's got about ten feet of sediment in the bottom of it in some places. So I would like if we could ask Fish and Wildlife to pick that lake back up again and start in maintaining it, you know, I'm like, I think it's really sad that we've got, you know, of course, when you look at it on, on the map, it's not in the city because it's a state, state-owned waters. But, you know, the city is eighty percent around the outside edge of it and I just think it's a real shame that these people live on a lake and they can't, they can't go out into it. So I'd like to see if we could ask for some monies and, and I get, you know, everybody's saying, don't ask for any, any money, but I still think we should ask for whatever we want to ask for and if it doesn't get funded, c'est la vie. But at least kind of start the process and say, please pick this lake back up, you know, it's an important resource for our community and let's get it back where it could be used.
Can we talk through that one real quick?
Sure.
I like the idea, when you look at the historic areas and that was like a pristine.
Yes.
Circular lake, I mean, it's just the, the flood control that happens, right? And you don't get the, the fluctuation to kill off all the, all the.
I, I don't pretend to be a lake hydrologist, but I have talked to lake hydrologists and they just basically said Fish and Wildlife, FWC has walked away from this lake and they're, they're not maintaining it, they're not doing aquatic weed control, they just basically are, you know, willing to just let it go.
Well, and when they did the drawdown, they dammed it up to where they didn't even draw it down.
Exactly.
To clean it up, so that's, that's then turned it back.
Yeah, so they basically, and I know that, you know, they've been reached out to previously, Ms. Holcamp might have information on it, I don't know, I haven't had a chance to talk to her about it, but, you know, it's just something I would like to see it return to a lake that could be used.
Is there a way we can try to permit it to where we can almost dam it off and then it'd probably take a number of years to draw the water down in it, let stuff die off, fill it back up, draw it down, fill it back up over a couple of years and try to get it to come back?
Well, we're not, I mean, lakes are controlled by the state.
Yeah, but like asking for that, just to say.
Well, I wouldn't want to like, me personally, I don't think we should get involved in maintaining state-owned waterway, I mean, it's just millions of dollars.
Yeah.
I think the state needs to maintain the state asset, but Ms. Holcamp might have more information.
Yeah, Lake Running Mead, I know when we drew the lake down, that's why they sheet piled that so the, so the Lake Running Mead would draw down and, because it would have created more problems, more vegetation when the water, you know, when they release the water back in there. I know that the county, maybe four, five years ago, I'm bad with time right now, but they did clean out the canal that went in there for those residents, but they wouldn't touch, they wouldn't touch the lake either. And FWC has told me numerous times, they, they don't, you know, they don't want to maintain that. I think from a, from a Parks and Rec standpoint, I mean, I maintain the vegetation, Chisholm, Lake Run, I think we need to really put the pressure on FWC to pick it back up and we just stay back because it's going to take a lot of work.
Oh, heck yeah, that's why I'm like, I don't think we should dip our toe and that is a state-owned water and I think we ought to put the pressure on the state.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, I'm sure Representative Hawkins would be willing to help us with that as well, I just think it's really, really sad if everybody has time, I didn't bring in the pictures, but just to go back in time and look at it, I mean, it used to be a beautiful lake and now it's, looks like you could walk straight across it. And then my last kind of thought process was, I thought of this today and I didn't have time to do it, about reaching out to the League of Cities to kind of just ask if there are any, you know, have any other cities done any kind of cool ordinances within the state or local bills? But, you know, I was trying to like rack my brain to think of something we could do that could help businesses, like we did with that local, the local bill that we did for the liquor license, you know, something like that, that didn't cost any dollars, but it was really impactful to like small businesses and things like that. And I couldn't, I've like been racking my brain on it and I haven't been able to come up with any kind of ideas, that's why I'm kind of throwing it out to the group, maybe, there's a lot of smart people in the room, like maybe somebody has an idea, but like that local option liquor bill that we did, I thought was genius. And so just thinking of something along those lines as well, but that was at my food trucks, the Lake Runamide and East Lake Tahoe, maintaining the funds that we do have for East Lake Tahoe, so, those were kind of thoughts.
Well, I certainly liked the ideas, I, I know the League of Cities have pretty well narrowed down what they want as far as their pet projects on a statewide basis, you know, the Stoudowski funds is probably one of their biggest thing and then emphasizing home rule and.
No, I just mean like, you know, they talked to all the cities in the state, like maybe they're like, hey, you know, this little town in the Panhandle did this really cool local bill and it helped spur economic growth or whatever.
That's certainly worth investigating.
I just didn't have time, I thought of it today and I didn't have time to call before the three o'clock meeting.
If I could just add right now, we've still got some time, you know, legislation starts this year, legislation, legislation is going to start in March, so we do have a few more weeks. So if something pops up, we have a couple of council meetings. The other thing I'd like to talk about is if there's anything to do with water, wastewater infrastructure, if, if we could go and look at that in the next couple of weeks and come back with something. Probably first council meeting in February because Marjorie's telling me there's some things we need to probably look at or ask for. But I'll bring that back to you guys, but I want to move forward looking at that, not only, in addition to the alternative water supply issue.
Yeah, is the AWS something we're going to put as a federal priority? Or is that the right spot there?
I'm going to let Marjorie, I talked to Brian about that before he got here. There's some challenges in that because we're in the, in the stopper group, so we'd have to do it as a group, so I'll let her expound, that's about as much as my expertise goes, I'm going to stop right there.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, I sit on the, the Water Board over at Tahoe for the city and we just had our meeting yesterday and I know that they've gotten a couple different allocations over a million dollars in funding to try to help with the construction and design of Cypress. So I was wondering, like, if this is a smart legislative priority for us to take the lead on, it seems like maybe that's a cumulative ask, not a city ask. Like if we, we've got five chips to spend here, like maybe that's not one of our, our chips, maybe that's, we leave it to TWA.
Congratulations on being elected the Chair.
Yeah, yeah, thanks Hector.
I think you're right on target. I think that we normally in the stopper group and for those of you, you know that I've been a member of stopper, either a regulator or on the other side for the compliance arena or the, I was the utilities director for Polk County for many, many years. And everything is done in concert, so you're right. What I usually see for the legislative priorities for utilities would be a specific, and you always work with a lobbyist, of course, and, you know, what are they receptive for? Putting together infrastructure projects, for example, if you, we've got a deteriorating sewer infrastructure and we need to, you know, rehab it, that, I mean, it could be, I'm just pulling that out of the air. So, and, and putting together just a really quick summary of something that you can, a takeaway and, and share that and then meeting with the delegation and you guys, I'm sure, work with the, the delegation throughout the year. And just make sure that we've got something that you can share with them, say, hey, this is what we really need, so. And in the future, from a federal standpoint, we probably might consider WIFIA funding down the road for the cooperative. It's just, there's a package and we talked to Wendy about all the tools in the tool chest to do all the infrastructure and the alternative water supplies that we need in, moving forward in the future. So it's a, it's a, it's several different things.
That's it for me.
Do we need any further discussion about the items she proposed?
No, I'm good on that, I'm clear, I wrote it all down.
Good.
Are we gonna, sorry, but I know we have, how many in here, five? Five items in here and then I just listed three more, like, do you put them all together and then we vote on them, is that what you're going to do or are we going to say pick the top five or? Because we're going to end up with too many, I'm sure.
Well, I think some of these are both appropriation requests and some of them, we're just going to keep an eye on policy and, and like I said, we don't know. Yeah, mostly these are policy-driven.
Yeah, and it's like the affordable housing thing, that's like an Olay issue, that's a, that's a League of Cities issue and we're just, you know, joining them with that, but I think you need to narrow down which ones are your top priorities.
Let me put this a different way. So the legislative ask, give me to the first meeting in February, the paperwork for any appropriations is due February 1st. So the seaplane base is actually 500,000. That's a typo. And if we're going to come back with something with the infrastructure, we would need to present that to, to council. I still think there's time to get that in. I think that's kind of an artificial deadline because I wanted to have time to have the lobbyists review everything. Because last year, the forms we submit to the Senate and the House, and we went back and forth with adjusting it, making sure it's correct from a lobbying perspective, we use the right buzzwords and stuff.
I talked to one of our state representatives today, actually, and she was saying that the, it's, you don't have much time to ask for anything that's involved money.
Yeah.
She's like, and she said she was going to send me the, the dates and stuff, but that our lobbyists should know. But yeah, she was just, because I was talking about, we were going to have this discussion today. And they, and she was like, well, you better hurry up because once we start in session, like the, the budget's already in and we're voting on the budget.
I have it on my calendar. I think you said February 1st, you had to have them filed.
Yeah, it's, it's soon.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
A quick suggestion to you. You have, as Councilwoman Matheny pointed out, you have several items on your list. It might be appropriate to have Mr. Sturgeon get with the city's lobbyist, go over the list and let the lobbyist guide you as to what they think the best effort is. Have it come back at the next council meeting with that information and then have the council just formally say, okay, here's our, three or four of our best shot for the lobbyist view. Everything else can roll into Olay. And then you do it next week at your council meeting.
Thank you, Dan. I can do that for next meeting for sure. Because like I said, I, and like I said, I've been in constant contact with Chris and Johnny Johnson from Olay. And so, you know, I could get that done by the next meeting during my time.
I agree. We agree.
Perfect.
Good. Anything else?
Yes.
Yes.
Not for legislative, I'm sorry. I have two other items I'd like to discuss with you this evening.
All right. Go for it.
Can we hand out the stuff? We can talk about the property?
Which one? Bill, which one?
Pine Tree. This is just, I need some direction.
Pine Tree?
The joint use facility over here, over here, across the street, is a 45-year-old building. It's also in the Medical Arts Campus. And we have a significant roof leak in this building. Right now, we're estimating to be 400 to 500,000 dollars to replace the roof. We're going to try to patch it. We had a mold issue over there. And like I said, the building is deteriorating. We're an expanding city. The school board has some property for sale.
Okay.
Of Pine Tree that we think would be suitable for purchase, for an operations building for our utilities.
Okay. Can you start that over now that I know where you're talking?
Okay, sure. So the joint use facility across the street here is where we have our fleet and our utilities and code enforcement right now. That building is 45 years old. It is a deteriorating building. We've had a significant roof leak over there in the last year, estimating about a half a million dollars to, to replace the roof. I don't think that's a good investment. I think we're going to try to patch it to get through a couple more years, limp over the line. The joint use facility and all that property is also in the MAC. Had an inquiry the other day about purchasing the property and then they didn't call me back, but I have had an inquiry on how to buy that piece of property. But with it, as a growing city, I think we need to look at how we expand our services. And this property would be suitable. Talked to Marjorie and this is for sale for the school board, from the school board for 2.8 million dollars. And it'd be a perfect spot for a new operations building. If you look at the map, you see we have our fire and police training facility in that area. And our lay down yard would be perfect right in here. So Marjorie, you want to help me out here?
Yes, I'd just add to what he just said. We, we really are running out of space at the joint use. And as I understand it, that is a prime location for medical office perhaps in the future. And as we grow, we're going to need some additional property. It is the, if you look at the second diagram, which is a operational building layout, and we really haven't had a lot of time to just try to, to figure out what, what could fit. But we wanted to at least determine whether the existing plus could fit on the property. And so an engineer laid this out, so it's not really pretty like John Davis would, would do. But you can see that there, we've, we've created a little stormwater pond buffer. We could make it look much nicer. There are some homes going in, in the area that you see that's being developed. There's a nice buffer actually across the street between the houses and the road. And we would look at buffering of the facility. And we'd want to do a public workshop to, to see, to, to talk to the neighbors. But it's hard to find 18 acres that somebody's willing to sell you. This is very close to the wastewater plant as well. Offsite to the north is, I think that's directionally correct, is the wastewater plant. So it's, it's not very far away.
I'm, I'm sorry, Bill. I was watching the papers get delivered and I couldn't listen at the same time, I guess. But did you say something about the school board?
It's owned by the school board, this property.
Okay. So are they surplusing it or would they sell it to us?
They, they, we've been begging and pleading to give us an extension. We have to have something till within 30 days. That's why I brought this up today to request direction. But they are, I don't know if they're surplusing it as far as in the technical term, but I think they need the money for another project. I think that's why they're pushing the timeline on it.
So they've had it, they've had it for sale for quite some time. When Marjorie came on board, she, she started discussing needs. And I, I reached out to Rhonda to find out what the price was on it. She said that the previous school board didn't want to sell it for residential purposes. So, so that's why it hadn't been sold yet. But then she said they were going to revisit all of that with the new board. And they revisited and that's when she provided us with the 2.8 million and said we had 30 days. So I'm assuming because she immediately gave us 30 days, that, that if we don't respond with a commitment, that they're going to proceed with other options.
What's the neighborhood? What's the name of that neighborhood?
It's Covington is the manufactured home site, I believe, to the.
Existing.
Yeah, the existing one. And the new one, I just drove by there.
Eagles Desk or something. Eagles Preserve.
I believe that's Eagle Preserve. That's where we have. That'd be Eagle Preserve. That was where there was a lot of discussion of whether they wanted to do higher-end homes or medium homes. That's a, a nice little residential area, concrete homes. The area to the south of that is all manufactured homes. And then obviously you have part of the St. Cloud Manor area further to the south, and you have the church to the east of the property. And then north of that, those two vacant properties where you see the 50,000 square foot stormwater pond, north of there is the Sawgrass subdivision.
So I want to give you my county perspective. So the, and, and I'm, I'm not sure what some of the labels exactly mean. So that's why I want to give you the county perspective. So working with our road and bridge office that's off of Canoe Creek Road, you know, that, I moved to St. Cloud in 1983 and that was there in 1983. And there was nothing around it. Well, now it's got homes all around it. It's similar to our landfill that we have, the landfill and transportation that's been there since I don't know where. And then the houses all move up against it and then everybody's upset about it. And so when you say the lay down area and construction, I'm not sure what all you're envisioning to be outside. But I know that like at the county, there's, the people are always complaining all around the road and bridge facility because, you know, they have big stockpiles of dirt and gravel and all kinds of stuff. And, you know, the wind blows and the people's back porches are filled up with dirt. I'm just kind of thinking, you know, we're, I don't know what you're envisioning to be here, if it's all enclosed. I think that would be things that you would have to think about to really keep it neat and tidy because you're basically shoehorning in, in the middle of development. I mean, the, the road and bridge guys get complaints all the time. And it's like, well, we were here first. You're not going to have that, you're not going to have that luxury. You weren't here first. So I just don't know what, what it's going to look, look like or what's going to be stored outside. That's just kind of my first thought. And then I don't know, it's 2.8 million dollars. Mr. Trace probably would know better. It's 2.8 million.
Double or triple what I think it's worth.
Yeah.
So I know we're looking to get this property, but don't we have 50 acres right by Indiana Ave and Nolte Road? That's Parks and Rec. Is that a buildable piece of property there? It's L-shaped. It's owned by the city. It's on a canal.
I think you're talking about Alfordic, right?
Yeah, the one that's verdict and, well, it runs parallel sort of with Indiana Ave. Yeah.
I think we were looking to that for expansion, Parks and Rec fields, correct? Didn't we master plan that? No? Okay. Oh, okay. I was right.
So there's a road there. So I'm going to, if I remember, we were talking about the back 40 of the soccer fields. Yeah. So back several years ago, that there, I don't know how many acres, but there's a, because of the La Hoo property, there's that road that's going to run north and south through there. So it's, you're not actually have all that property because there's a road that's going to go through there as a connector road. And I believe, Andre might be able to answer this better, but I believe that part of, they were giving us property or we were doing a property switch to be able to put this road through as long as we gave them an area for a stormwater pond. So I mean, that's, there's really no property back there after you do all that.
You just made me think of something that's not related, but it's a workshop, right? We can spin off into topics. So is the school district going to surplus the property across from the Virginia Avenue Park? Because I know we've heard that a few times. Where we got the sometimes parking deal?
That's part of the, the future goal. I think after they move, when they start building the new bus barn, I think they're going to move the building maintenance facility. And then once building maintenance, that building maintenance facility has somewhere else to go.
Gotcha.
Right. So it's long range plan.
Do we tell them like we want first dibs on that property?
Well, I was the person who asked them if maybe they could move it. So I, and I have a great working relationship with Ms. Blake. So I'm, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable that as soon as they're ready, that she's going to come back and, and talk to us. But I will make sure to say it, just in case.
Hey, reminder, we still want that.
So Councilor Trace, what would an appropriate dollar per acre do you think in that area? Because I, I haven't, actually, one of my employees just sold two lots there. And it wasn't too far off from what.
150,000 an acre?
It was a little less than that, but not much.
Because I thought they were selling 25 acres behind Lakeview Elementary for less than, it was 25 acres and I thought it was less than 2 million bucks.
Can we buy that?
Well, it's, I think it's under contract now. I think they already authorized. But do you, do you know the sales price? Okay. Because to me, like, we literally just, the DSD just went through selling a bunch of property. And if we knew this need, why didn't we hold back property there? Or buy it as the city from the DSD?
In all fairness, you know, new director, been here six months, gets her feet underneath and comes to me and says, you know, we're out of room here. I knew the building was deteriorating. I knew we were going to have to move out of there. But then remember, we had talked about partnering with OUC. But they're, because of COVID, they're three years out now from that building. So there's a lot of things that happen. That's, that's why.
Can you patch the roof and make it three years?
And also with the DSD, I believe, Mr. Manzares, we've discussed it previously, because of the, the past due bonds and all of that, the thought was that if the city purchased it, that they weren't going to waive all of those previous bond fees. That we would, we would end up paying much more for the project than what we were able to sell it to somebody else to get out from under the debt. I hope I'm remembering that correctly.
That's correct.
And there was the recurring cost, right? It was 250,000 a year?
Yeah. And then it, it remains part of the Stevens Plantation CDD and has recurring assessments on it.
And evaluating the OUC property, that is not going to be enough space for us. There's not an adequate play down area among a number of other things. We'll probably need, the city itself will probably still need the OUC property and additional property.
Are you envisioning having piles of dirt? Or are you just laying down pipe and stuff?
Well, I, I think that was an excellent, I, I was thinking more pipe.
Okay.
And I've, I've been, since this became available, you know, and Rick, we drove around it to look and I'm like, you know, they're going to be concerned about things like noise, light, hours of working, truck traffic, large trucks, small trucks, you know, what size trucks. You can't do, I mean, if you put something, if you cite something even close to residential, there may be some limitations. You know, we could, I mean, this was just a first blush. I knew it became available. I had a poor engineer try to lay it out and it's, but it's, it's, it's a piece of property that is, I think, really worth looking at. But I'm concerned now that you've said the prices.
Well, so to me, and this is kind of getting into the future land use discussion of like Nolte, Old Canoe Creek, I want us to not just have residential there and maybe have some industrial, have something there. This would be a good something around there too. And I'm sure there's property owners around that are willing to sell. And especially some of the old farmer types that just don't want their property to turn into a neighborhood might sell off a piece to the city.
That'd be great. The other thing that we will need are some additional reuse storage. So the other thought, and, and look, this is just conceptual for, right now, but we need, we have 89 million gallons of reuse storage right now. And just rough, you know, doing the water balance, we probably, Eric was estimating, maybe we need another 89 million gallons of storage because we run out of reuse in the summer. And now that we've, in the dry season. So now that we've tightened up the system and we're going to continue to tighten it, we're not going to be augmenting our reuse with our inflow and infiltration. So it's going to, we're going to run out sooner. So I've been working with Toho. We're developing an interconnect with the reuse. But it's, that's Murphy's Law. There's plenty of water when you don't need it and not enough when you do need it. Tohopa has identified a, a space for us to put some 5 million gallon tanks. But that's, you know, that's not very much water. The stormwater ponds, they only hold about 10 days or so worth of reuse augmentation. They just don't recharge as fast as you would like. So just putting together all of that, the conceptual, and I, I love, you know, strategic planning in between the emergencies. But this is something that, you know, there's a potential for some additional storage and maybe that would be more palatable. But at that price, and if it's too high, it might not be, we still have to dig out the, there's land still available at the, the wastewater plant, but it won't be enough.
It's me. If it's, if it's market rate, I don't want a, a, you know, 30-day rush on something and we don't have it all planned out. If you're going to pay market rate from the school district, you might as well pay market rate somewhere else to get exactly what you need in the right spot. If we're getting a deal at 50,000 an acre, then maybe it's a, a different conversation. But at 150,000 an acre, I just don't think it's.
So Ms. Craig, I've brought this up a few times, probably predating you, I'm sure. But when we started talking about our water in the city and this shortfall in water and the CFWI and all that reuse, and then we had experts come in and evaluate our system. And I know it predates you because I remember Chris Fawes not telling me that the report might come back and say, stop the reuse, period, you know? But that's not what the report came back. And, you know, we're looking at stuff. But I've been talking about for four years about changing our land development code and making the subdivision, Todd Swingle talked about this 20 years ago. I remember him talking about it. But, you know, make every community have to provide some reuse in their own stormwater pond, oversize their stormwater pond and provide supplemental reuse water in these new communities to try to take the burden off of us. And I talked with Brian Wheeler back when he was still at Toho Water Authority about doing something on the, on the county side. And, and, you know, he was pretty. And, and, you know, he was pretty excited about the idea at the time. This is a few years ago and was like, oh, you know, at the time, he was like, well, Toho could, would be in charge of it. And then we could install pumps with floats and they could pull water from X to Y out of the stormwater pond. And then once it got to, down to Y, then they would supplement it with reuse and there would be two different tiers in billing. And so, you know, I was like, well, gosh, if every neighborhood, that's, I remember Todd Swingle talking about this 20 years ago. But it's like, if every neighborhood, you know, had to provide some of their own reuse, you know, that's a way to kind of add, uh, capacity to our system and not have our, all of our dollars into, um, the development. And I know we've put the restrictions in our land development codes too for the, um, I forget, what do they call it? Like water, water star landscaping?
And the sod, no.
Yeah, so it's like they're not allowed to have St. Augustine in the backyard and they're supposed to use Florida-friendly landscaping and all that stuff. So I know we've been trying to do that, but, you know, that's one thing we've been talking about and haven't really got anywhere about requiring the developments to provide some of their own reuse water.
So you couldn't have set up, um, set the stage for a conversation that we're preparing for any better? Because, uh, we've also discussed with Tohoku, uh, storing reuse, additional reuse in some of their ponds. In fact, the developer, we were very, we all got very excited about how we could leverage the stormwater ponds there and the storage tanks as well. That is also part of the concept of the One Water, Water Resources Grant that we've applied for. You know, stormwater augmentation, reuse, water, it, it's all optimizing the water and, uh, working with Andre and having more regional ponds that you can pull from and, and store, whether it's stormwater, reuse, or what have you. And then that also allows the developer more land for the footprints of their, their developments as well. We also have a, a contract pending with IFIS where they've come up with a soil amendment that if you can get with, you know, I'd, I'd love to provide some outreach to developers if they can mix this in with their soil, that it actually, um, they, they found that for the long term, the, the soil will hold more moisture and requires, uh, less irrigation. We're also bringing modifications to the land development code to, um, and, uh, talk, discussing with the developers that we can only provide, uh, as much reuse to them as they provide wastewater to us. So, and, and you, you guys know it takes four houses, uh, of wastewater to provide enough reuse for one household typically. That's usually the rule of thumb. So you can see that it's like the, the, like you said in another meeting, the pyramid scheme. At some point, you've got to figure out how do you, um, you, you've got to put some structure in place that limits that reuse to a, a really reasonable use. And irrigation in Florida, it, you probably know people over irrigate quite a bit, so it takes a lot of education. And it also takes some level of commitment, um, by the council to allow us to, to provide, um, uh, fines that, for people that violate the irrigation code and the reuse water code if they're not watering on their days. So it's kind of a, a collection of things that we're putting together to get us through and for, for the water pipe. And we, we're, we think we can make it all work with your support.
Yeah, and then, you know, the Lake Tohoku Kalaga Alternative Water Supply Project inside of Neo City. I mean, that's a pretty fascinating, I brought that up multiple times on our council, probably predating you again. But, you know, that's providing 400 million gallons of water available for Toho Water Authority to pull it out and turn it into reuse. And, uh, now they're talking about turning it into potable, uh, taking it from the lake and making it potable. So, you know, that was this regional, that was kind of the thing. We're going to build this regional stormwater pond. And from this elevation up is stormwater. From this elevation down is Toho's alternative water supply. You know, we've permitted it all through the state. It's a very elaborate system. And then basically, all of Neo City can develop without building a pond. Like you, if you come in there and buy a tract of land, you just build what you want. We've got this master plan and the intent is that, to bill back those people. So when you buy into Neo City, you pay a proportionate share of what it costs to dig that pond and then you pay an annual fee for the maintenance of the pond.
And if we could get a good value on land, we could probably do something like that in some of the properties around. And that's exactly what Andre and I, the, the Seem and I have been talking about, putting together something just like that, where you have the regional, uh, uh, storage. My first conversation with Todd about, uh, the, the stormwater ponds around the lake, he was actually looking at not only augmenting reuse, but the, the original concept was to use part of that water as, uh, surface water, potable water supply. So, but that didn't, I guess, I left the district and they weren't supportive of that concept anymore, I guess. But, um, so there's a lot of creative thought and a lot of solutions out there and, and where there's a will, there's a way.
On the west end of the ponds on the lakeshore down by the bathroom, there's like a pump in there, isn't there? In that building where the bathrooms are?
A pump?
On the west end?
Oh, the stormwater, yes, 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 the stor- stormwater augmentation pump.
And so is the intent, and, and my understanding, it's never happened, but the intent was that you could pull water out of those ponds and turn it into reuse?
Well, that's not exactly true. It has happened, um, but because the, uh, so the design was done before the ponds existed because you guys know it was a retrofit, um, ponds, uh, construction. And, uh, put, so putting directly into the reuse pipes, it doesn't meet the, uh, one NTU, the criterion, the regulatory criterion. So the distal, the filters get clogged or fouled. But what they've been doing is taking the stormwater and sending it in the wastewater pipe right there at Lift Station 5 and supplementing the reuse system with the stormwater ponds that way. So it was just an alternate way to do that. So then it goes through the wastewater treatment plant and there was capacity in the pipe.
Okay. Yeah, because I was thinking, I know that, um,
Not during rains.
Well, I, well, I know, I was thinking about, um, us pumping directly from those ponds into the lake, you know, to draw down the water when we were having all the flooding and all the problems that we were having. I was like, well, gosh, it should be nice to, you know, draw those things down ahead of storm events and in the rainy season, like, pull them down. And then that way there was extra capacity in the system. But, but I love the idea of trying to do like the One Water and, um, you know, I've got tons of experience with it. So I, I understand it and support it wholeheartedly.
Excellent.
So, um, I'd love to hear any of the ideas.
That, that's awesome.
But I want to say one thing. To improve the reliability of the pond at Neo City, they pull from, uh, East City Ditch and Mills Lou. So you might want to, so you've got the Neo City site and then you've got the big regional pond. And then, so they do get some water from stormwater. But a lot of their reliability came from putting up, they're going to put pump systems in and two major ditches that come out to the west of the pond. And they pump that water into the Neo City pond to improve the reliability because of, you know, feast and famine like we always have.
Right.
So if we were going to locate a regional pond, it might need to be next to the WPA Canal or, you know, something like that to pull water out of.
You know that triangular piece of property? The turnpike, the, the canal between, at, on the edge of the city? It's like wasted muck land. That would be a perfect spot. Like the same situation as Neo City where there's the pumps that have been there for 100 years that held that water table down there. There's pumps that hold the water table down there. That could be, do the same thing essentially.
Those pumps are gone now with the big pond.
Yeah, well, they're still in on the south side of Neptune Road.
Yeah, but they're not, they're not controlling the site.
But that's what we could do on that triangular piece.
But you might, that's what I was, yeah, you just might want to situate yourself near water that you can pull out.
Yeah.
So where are we landing on the proposal from?
Yeah, I was like.
We're, we got, we went down a rabbit hole.
Yeah, we did, long.
I just feel like with this, this property, if you, if you ask the neighbors, do you want an industrial thing next to you? What do you think the answer is going to be?
And you don't think the value's correct, Mr. Trace?
I don't think so.
I see his point about like, why is there such a quick timeline on us? We can't even think about it if we're paying market rate.
Available for such a long time.
Yeah.
Do you want me to go back and ask them again if they'll give us an extension? And we can discuss it next meet, uh, meeting Thursday?
I just think there's property along Nolte Road too that would be more central to the city that I would like to see some industrial around too. So it might be a, a, a use that's more complimentary. See something happening here.
You like the 50 acres that we own?
No.
So Mr. Anderson just told me that they apparently had an offer. They, um, had, uh, I think you just said a residential developer contacted us doing their due diligence. So that would be the reason for the expedited timing.
So where are you landing here, Mr.?
That sounds like a no-go to me.
It's a no for me. Uh, you can, you can find.
I think the location there in that residential area is going to be a challenge.
We'll continue to look. Quickly, the next thing. If we could hand out the, um, Bob, if you'll come up and give an overview on the, uh, City Hall project. If you recall, uh, we talked about, we were at a space at City Hall and creating the atrium with the Building Department funds. We went back and looked at how we can optimize this opportunity. And we do think it's an opportunity to do a significant remodel to City Hall, which would include remodeling the third floor, uh, for more office space and moving the council chambers down to the first floor. That does several things for us. So we moved down to the first floor, the council chambers, better public and handicap access to meetings, better security. Right now, people can wander around the building. It proves our office space was larger with windows for council members. You'll have your own dedicated conference room. Again, it doubles the seating in the, uh, council chambers. Again, we are a growing city and as we have more and more, uh, controversial subjects, more and more public will show up. It gives you an opportunity for a separate exit and privacy into the back parking. It also allows us better emergency evacuation and separate access. One of the things that always I found interesting, it seemed like the elevator always broke down right before a controversial meeting. And that would take that off the table. It also ma, lowers the wear and tear on that elevator. It consolidates the city manager's staff in one location and optimizes opposite space on the third floor. Provides a conference room about the 20 people. And as we've grown as a staff, I've grown directors, I have limited space where I can have a meeting with all of our directors. And again, it provides additional room for growth on the third floor for our planning department. Which they would be, if, if we approved this project, we would be going back, um, bringing them up to the third floor. Bob?
Thank you, sir. Bob DeTheris, building official. The drawings you have there from Song and Associates are approximately 30% construction drawings. It's the, uh, initial proposal for the, uh, floor plans. There are going to be a couple changes on the third floor because they made a couple of design errors as far as, uh, access to different areas. Again, it is only a 30% design. But if you look through there, there, there are some features that will really help the staff, not only for the Building Department, but for other departments. There's a large conference room that will be located on the, can't remember, the second or third floor. Additional office space. There are escalators going from the first floor to the second floor. The reason for escalators was they can handle more people in a more efficient manner than an elevator, especially with, uh, the COVID. But it's, uh, it maximizes the use of space. And, uh, like the city manager was saying, in conjunction with that project, it gives us the opportunity, uh, once this project is put online, to remodel the, uh, first and third floors. It increases your, uh, council chambers, uh, more convenient offices. And, uh, there's, it's pretty much a win-win for everybody.
Bob, what's the, um, potential contractor staging area? What, what is that? And it looks like it's gated off, maybe?
14 acres for 14 million.
Okay, is that on the first floor?
It's the outside to the, to the east of the building. It's like the parking lot by, um, what used to be Jimmy's.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, that is the lay down area for the contractors.
Oh, during construction?
During construction.
Oh, okay.
So they would have their, uh, construction trailer there and a lay down area for material. And that would also be, um, a staging area for them as well. And that would be just during construction.
Right, right. I was worried about losing the parking, but it's.
Yeah, we're not going to be losing any parking from this.
Is it, is it time for comments?
Yes.
I think you guys rocked it. This one's good.
You think what?
I think they rocked it. It looks good. I mean, it, everything I look at makes sense. On the second floor with the Building Department, first floor, I think we were talking about it before of, utilities still has their area where you, you can pay bills, the security of it, having one entry in and out, or one entry in and then, you know, emergency exits out. Bigger council chambers on the southern one, more office space. I think it's good.
I like it. I always thought it was kind of odd, like, which door do I go in?
Yeah, with, the, the central entrance, uh, will really enhance the functionality of City Hall. Plus, uh, it, uh, will be a major security enhancement to the building as well.
Do we need to ask, um, Bruce Vickers' office? I mean, I don't see, I've not really delved into these plans. Like, are we making changes over into his side? Do we need to ask him anything?
He's, I have a briefing with him, I think, early next week about another issue and we'll brief him on this and show. It shouldn't affect, it'll affect his operations, like when we're doing the construction, but everything would remain the same on his part of the building.
Okay.
Right, it, for, for the first phase of construction, the entrance will have to be around the, uh, north side of the building until they get the, uh, concrete poured and the steel erected. Once that happens, then they can, uh, the public can access the building again from the south side through a hardened tunnel to each entrance.
How many square feet is this adding? Ballpark?
I, I, ballpark around 8,000.
Oh, wow. Is it going to be the, I'm, while they're looking, is it going to be the same construction as the old building? You know, I saw that one go up when they built it on the ground and stood it up.
Right, this, this will not be tilt-up construction. It will match the exterior of the current building, but it will not be tilt-up.
Oh, it looks like it's white, no? Is the addition white?
No. The addition is, uh, a brick color, but there are some white or lighter colored highlights on it.
Oh, it looks white in this.
No, that should have been a color rendering. I'm, I apologize for that.
Well, actually, I, I thought it was mostly white with brick caps on the.
Yeah, I like the white.
Yeah, I do too.
It's, well, or maybe it's.
Yeah, it, it, it's going to have accents to match the current building.
Yeah, it looks like it's white with like an accent that matches the building, but it's hard to tell on black and white.
And does this meet the operational space needs for the next however many years you guys planned out for?
Yes. It will, it will greatly improve the efficiency of the Building Department front counter operations. It increases the lobby size, uh, so that we can, we can accommodate more people in there. As you're well aware, the, the, the current configuration of the building and community development department there, the, the odd angles that everything is on, it's. department there, the odd angles that everything is on, it just does not make for an efficient use of space.
Yep. I mean, it's not like the angles made it prettier either.
But it makes a great council chamber.
Right, well, even the council chambers, the, it looks like if you leave the council chambers, you go into the meeting workspace. So that means there, nothing could go on there if you're having a council meeting, so there, I don't know if there's like a separate area to that?
Now, the door, this was a concept drawing.
Okay.
And the door was left out. There will be a double door, just like the existing door going into the space, that will take you from the council chamber area to the lobby in the new atrium area.
The meeting room, sort of where, I guess, would be Andre's offices right now. It just seems like if, if there's somebody, something going on in there, I mean, you would, it looks like a very large space that we would walk into, but I'm not sure what would be going in there.
It's almost like the conference room on the...
Yeah, like, kind of like, we have a hallway before our conference room, so you can have a conference many times that I'm up there, you can have your meeting going on, I can just walk right on by, so I just, I'm not 100% sure there.
So where that offices, the intention of that was, you know, before the council meeting, kind of staging for the council members, and also after the meeting, when the mayor has to sign paperwork, that there's an easy place to go in. That was the intention of that area.
Okay. Can we study this and...
Actually, that leads me to a question. Would the, because a big, public-facing meeting is on the first floor in the, in the new council chambers, would that bathroom need to be enlarged? I mean, I guess the third floor one works now, but when you double the amount of seating in the council chambers, would the bathroom need to be bigger?
And how?
The public bathroom for, you have 200, 120, you know, with, stay in your room, you get 150 people in there in one toilet.
No, because you can, you can count the restrooms on the other two floors.
But during a meeting, you'd shut down those two floors for public access. I'm just saying, during, during council meetings, if folks need to use a restroom.
We'll take a look at that.
Okay. We don't want any spills.
Well, and again, you know, you count those, but if we're talking about security, you wouldn't want people wandering up this.
Yeah, you don't want that closure.
Maybe we do look at expanding that. Or in the flex space, we could put porta-johns. No, I'm just kidding.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it looks good.
So can you talk about the phasing a little bit, Bob? How that would, how it would work and unfold?
Right, well, we're, we're planning on, as far as the atrium goes, we should have 100% drawings by the end of April. Then we will go out to bid. That's going to be 60 days, Leslie?
Say no, say no.
They have to be out on the street. 30 days? Okay, 30 days out to bid, award the contract. We hope to start construction by the end of August.
Excellent.
And it will probably be an 18-month project. Then, after the atrium area is complete, that's when we will be looking at the first and third floor remodel. Planning would be able to stay in the area they are currently during construction, because the area where they are is not going to be as horribly affected. Obviously, the council meetings would have to continue here. So we're looking at probably 13 and a half months total for the first and third floor remodels.
How's the public going to get into Building Department and the water?
They, they will maintain access to both buildings A and B during construction.
That's the hardened tunnel.
Yeah. Well, once the atrium is complete, they will, the public will still be able to access the water department. They just, the Building Department will be segregated off.
Okay. Looks good.
And are there any, I know this like kind of started before and during COVID, are there any like lessons learned from COVID for anything for the operation, just ways you would design buildings different because?
Well, obviously, the escalators, the permit technician, the permit counter will have, right, it's going to be set up similar to the water department's permit counter, intake counter there. It's going to be hardened, so, you know, there'll be bulletproof material into the counter and bulletproof glass. The lobby area is enlarged so that you can accommodate more than two or three people in there. And again, it's access via escalator rather than elevator, so it just, it will make the operation much more efficient.
So that's a good question. I know that we did an analysis of like council chambers and security features and all that, so I'm sure that's all assimilated into these plans.
That's correct.
Okay, that's great.
And something also to keep in mind, security-wise, they will have to go through a metal detector before they get in the chambers, unlike now where they can just walk in.
What do you need?
That's it, just wanted to show you, if we got, we'll start moving ahead, you know, it's a, it's a longer-term project, but we'll do the first phase.
Has there been any estimates on the cost?
About $1.9 million, and that would be out of different funds, including the Building Fund.
That was just for the first and third floor redo?
Correct.
The atrium was different, yeah, okay.
Yes. I said that right, right, Bob? Okay.
Right.
My thoughts.
And the atrium part was already budgeted through Building Department and all that?
That was part of the budget amendment that you all approved last month, or, yeah, this month.
Any other questions? You have any other surprises for us?
I wouldn't call them surprises. No, but I want to thank each of you for being here, I know it was a long day. Staff worked really hard on the strategic planning and all these projects, and thank you for your attention and giving us those comments. We can really move this city to the next level, so thank you.
And we thank you for your leadership and all of your hard work, and Dan for his great patience inside over there. Appreciate all you guys, thank you. Thank you, staff. And we are adjourned.
Use the gavel, use the gavel.
Gavel, gavel.
Seven tons. I'm going to leave these here.